Today is January 21st, 2025. Happy New Year to everyone. We're going to start with the invocation. If we could rise and Pastor Chitwood from Anchor Christian Church, come on up. Thank you, sir.
Please.
Let us pray. Dear God, we thank you for this day that you've given us and the blessings that you show us each and every day. Thank you for the freedom we have to gather, to gather and to meet. Thank you for those that guard our freedom and take care of it. I pray, Lord, you'll be with all the first responders that care for others and take care of them and watch over them. And, Lord, we ask that you might grant wisdom to those that lead our county and our city and our nation. Grant them, Lord, the wisdom they need to make decisions that impact lives of others, just watch over them. Lord, thank you for our freedom. Let us never take it for granted. It's in Christ's name we pray.
Amen.
Turn to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Pastor. Have a great day. We'll move on to ceremonial presentations. And the first one is Commissioner Penegras, sir.
Thank you, Chairman. If I could, have the group come forward. I think we have some special guests here this morning. Dylan Moon, the founder of Cram, and all the students, come forward, please. You can go ahead and bring any of the students that's going to be coming up with you, Dylan. If you have them come up here and stand by the podium, I'll read the resolution into the record and then we'll do a picture afterwards. You guys just come stand here next to the right of the podium right there. Yeah, right there, good.
Yeah.
And thank you for being here this morning. This is a very important group of kids here. So I'd like to read this proclamation to the record. Whereas, Cram, creating role models and mentors, a student-run, not-for-profit, 501(c)(3), is dedicated to the mentorship, support, and success of students in Lee County and celebrating five years of peer mentorship between students of varying ages, backgrounds, and learning levels. Whereas, Cram's group of vetted and trained mentors from Canterbury School, Fort Myers High School IB, and Bishop Road High School exceeds 75 members who provide face-to-face academic support, positive reinforcement, and friendship to more than 200 Lee County Elementary, Middle, and High School students. Whereas, Cram mentors meet and mentors on a weekly basis, Cram sessions at Fort Myers Middle Academy to provide support and homework, offer a snack, and give advice. Whereas, the month of January is designated as National Mentoring Month to raise awareness about the power of impact that mentoring has young people, exposes them to new ideas, new goals, new ways of doing things. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Lee County Commissioners, Lee County Board does hereby recognize Cram mentors as valuable impact for students of Lee County the National Mentoring Month year-round. Do duly execute this by our Chairman Kevin Wayne. So thank you.
Congratulations, guys.
Come back, come back, come back, I have one for everybody. So we're going to get one of these here and then we have a group speaker and then we'll do a picture together. If you just all come and turn around for a picture, I'm thinking you've got some scrap parents here and some, our group party working here.
Thank you, appreciate that.
You get some pictures?
Yeah, appreciate it.
There you go, pass them out.
Hey, nice to meet you. Nice to meet you guys. Thanks for coming down.
You look like your dad.
Hey, I'm Brian. Nice to meet you. Nice to meet you. Thank you, guys. I guess not. We're a little confused today.
Great job.
Congratulations. Yeah. Congratulations.
Okay, if we all get together in front, we'll get a group picture.
Congratulations.
My pleasure.
Congratulations, great job.
All right, everybody ready?
Hold up your proclamations. Smile, some of you are taller than the commissioner.
Someone taller, that's wonderful. My daddy's not here.
Yeah.
One more? All right, sure you give one big smile? Thank you so much.
Great, and Dylan and Hoover from the group would like to speak to address the crowd. It'd be great, just go to the podium there and the rest of you, just go back by the podium there.
Anybody?
Yes.
Yep, right from that mic.
You don't have to touch anything, it's all wired.
I want to thank you. It's such a big honor to receive this proclamation. It's crazy that it's been five years coming. We've been working hard, very diligently. I want to thank the Board, United Way, and Fort Myers Middle Academy for making this possible. Mentorship has been such a big part of our weeks and lives for five years since our seventh grade, since COVID. So I think this is a really big step and can't wait to see what the future holds for Cram and for mentorship in the community. Thank you.
Thank you, good job.
I just wanted to say, if anyone out here knows, like, any schools that need this service, our biggest goal the past two years has been to get this into any school that needs it. So, yeah, that's it, thank you.
Great, yeah. That's going to be a great program to help other children in school. So thank you, guys, for stepping up and doing that. Thank you. Thank you, Chairman.
Appreciate it. Next presentation is Southwest Florida PR from Commissioner Hammond.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to ask everybody from the FPRA to come stand next to the podium and I will read a ceremonial resolution into the record and then we'll have somebody say a few words afterwards. Come on up. This is not a shy group, I will tell you that. A group of public relations professionals. If you guys, like I said, yeah, just stand right there by the podium. Well, good morning. It is a real pleasure to have you all here this morning to celebrate this big occasion. I'll read the proclamation into the record as follows. It says, whereas the Florida Public Relations Association, founded in 1938, is the oldest public relations organization in the United States and dedicated to providing public relations professionals with knowledge, resources, and ethical standards to serve their organizations and communities effectively. And whereas on January 16th, 1985, the Southwest Florida chapter of FPRA was established as part of this legacy, contributing 40 years of leadership, professional development, and innovation to our community. And whereas the chapter has fostered an environment to provide public relations, communications, and marketing professionals with a forum to collaborate, share expertise, and advance the profession. And the chapter has continually adapted to the evolving communications landscape while strengthening the professions across Southwest Florida through its values of community, integrity, learning, and servant leadership. And whereas members of the chapter represent a wide range of backgrounds, including government, healthcare, education, nonprofit, and private corporations, contributing to the growth, success, and resilience of Southwest Florida. And whereas the chapter places a strong emphasis on actively cultivating the next generation of professionals through its student chapter at Florida Gulf Coast University, mentorship initiatives, and internship programs, ensuring the sustainability and evolution of the profession. And whereas the 40th anniversary of the Southwest Florida chapter represents a significant milestone, honoring its contributions to both the local community and the enduring history of FPRA. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Lee County, Florida, proclaims that January 16th, 2025, shall be known as Southwest Florida PR and Communications Professionals Day and encourages all citizens and industry partners to honor these professionals and recognize their commitment to their field. It was signed on the 21st day of January by our chairman. Congratulations, folks. Guys, let's take a picture together. Good to see you here, yeah. Thank you so much. Good to see you again, yeah. Miriam, congratulations. These are all my old friends.
Yeah, my good.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
It was always hard to find someone to do the newsletter. Oh, are you really? Oh, there you go. Emily writes a great newsletter, if you ever.
Come around, ladies, we're going to get a picture. I think there's somebody behind you too, right?
And one more picture for the record. Just a question.
All right, three, two, one.
All right, and I think Lauren, you're our spokesperson. If you'll say a few words.
Somebody put a step.
Good morning. First, I want to congratulate Cram. What a wonderful organization that we have in our community and thanks to those young people for really truly making a difference. On behalf of the Southwest Florida chapter of the Florida Public Relations Association, I want to thank you, our county commissioners, for recognizing a significant milestone, our 40th anniversary. Since our founding on January 15th, 1985, our chapter has built a legacy of excellence and service to Lee County. We have brought together public relations and communications professionals from diverse industries to keep our community informed, foster transparency, and build trust through strategic and ethical communication. This recognition honors not just our members, some of whom are here with me today, but also the impact of the public relations on the success and resilience of our community. Thank you again for this honor and for supporting the work we do. We are excited to continue the growth and development of our profession while serving Lee County for the next 40 years and beyond. Thank you so much.
Congratulations. Mr. Chairman, the only thing wrong with that is I refuse to accept that 1985 was 40 years ago. It feels more like '29, right?
Yeah, Mrs. Towne, older when you say that.
I apply.
I wish. Thank you very much, I appreciate it. Congratulations once again. Okay. Next item on the agenda is our recap. On the recap, we're going to defer and continue 43 and 44 to make abundance of caution. I'm going to make a motion to defer those.
Okay, I'll second that, Mr. Chair.
A motion is second on the floor. Any public comment about deferring 43 or 44? See, none of those public comments come back up to the dais. Any discussion? Anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Now we consent the agenda. Draw through the commissioners to see if anyone would like to pull anything. Patricia Hammond.
I have no items today, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Penegras.
No items.
I'm going to pull item number six. Commissioner.
I'd like to pull nine, 10, and 39.
Nine, 10, and 39.
I have none, Commissioner, Chairman, sorry.
Thank you, no problem. Let's just deal with the balance of them.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move approval of the balance of the consent agenda. I'll second.
I have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Hammond. I have a second by Commissioner Greenwell. Any public comment on the consent agenda other than the items we pulled? Please raise your hand. Marsha Ellis, come on up.
Good morning, Commissioners. Marsha Ellis for the record. So I had submitted a card and I know there are members of the audience who have submitted cards to give their input, particularly, a lot of folks are here today with concerns on item 22, which is related to Ten Mile Canal and those backflow preventers. I too have comment on Ten Mile Canal, not only in terms of the flooding, but also in terms of the industrial inputs and the complete deforestation of whole areas surrounding the airport, Markedley, Alaco, and Ben Hill Griffin. I just want to remind the commissioners that each tree that y'all cut down, that's about 50 gallons of water that are held in that tree, as well as the water quality benefits and the oxygen that's being produced in these areas that are being entirely clear-cutted. I would like to request that we look at the pollution inputs, including PFOS, PFOA, and PFAS that are in Ten Mile Canal to get a better handle on that. The second item I'm going to speak about is the item number 52, I believe, yes? That shows us exactly what a large investment of public funds, our public water supply is, and when we have overdevelopment that impacts those future resources. This particular item calls for an additional $273,000, adding another 145 days to that contract. And I just remind the commissioners and the public what an investment that is. But primarily, I'm interested in number 11, item number 11, which is increasing the amounts of fines on folks in our community who run afoul of code enforcement. Particularly, I want to say, this isn't a level playing field. And when we start getting into discretionary actions and administrative actions, it creates an environment that's really rife for a lot of lack of transparency and unequal enforcement, right? And I think that it's different if you're a person, let's say, that has a rental property and you might have some renters out there that are leaving their garbage cans out on a road, running afoul of coenforcement, versus a developer or a big operation that is repeatedly polluting and violating bodies of water, large areas, tracts of land. And those are the people that hire attorneys and hold teams to negotiate their fines and drag these code enforcement actions out for long periods of time. I also want to point out that who is responsible for the prosecution of violations, as it is called out in Administrative Code 214, would be the director. So let's understand this.
Thank you for your comments.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. Yes, sir, come on up. I only have one card that indicates they'd like to talk on the agenda, item number 22. Is your name Russ?
Yes.
Okay. We're going to make your card next. A lot of cards are here, but they don't have what they want to talk about. Yours did and I obviously just got in front of my eyes. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I appreciate the ability to speak. My concern is...
Put your name on the record, sorry.
Sure, my name is...
Put your name on the record, yeah.
Is Russell Arrington.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And I have lived off Island Park Road for the last 30 years. And my concern is that as of late, let's say roughly the last five, six years, the amount of stormwater runoff into Ten Mile Canal has increased with the amount of development off of Alaco Road, Rippey Parkway, Metro Parkway, and such. And from what I've been told, the Ten Mile Canal basically drains about 60 square miles out of a basin area of Fort Myers and that area. And from Highway 41 to Mullot Creek, it's roughly about three feet deep and it's limestone rock. Now, many years ago, they did some dredging with a cutter head dredge that was primarily to remove sand because cutter head dredges are ineffective with rock. And so my question or my concern is that because the depth of Ten Mile Canal from 41 to Mullot Creek is roughly only three feet, it appears that it has exceeded the capacity of the area that drains into it to flow that water out of the canal without overflowing the canal. In the last three storms, we've had considerable overflowage of that canal into the residence off of Island Park Road, which consists of hundreds of homes that were affected by this flooding. Now, I realize that Ian was kind of a unique storm and we had the bay actually coming up the waterway. And I understand there's nothing that the county or, there was no way to prevent that. But what we have seen over the last five, six years is that normal heavy rain events, tropical storms, or hurricanes that skirt us dump enough water into the basin that the lower Ten Mile Canal cannot effectively flow that into a sterile bay. So that is my concern. And I was also wondering, I know this isn't the part of it, but if maybe I could get with someone to get more information that I could disseminate towards the people that live off Island Park Road because an awful lot of homeowners really are in the dark as to what's being proposed or what's in the works to possibly fix that situation.
Thank you for your comments. I'll have someone from staff reach out to you after the meeting.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments, appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
I have one other card that actually talks about urban trees and the right-of-way. Joe Beck. All the other cards don't have a topic, so I don't know if they want to speak. But Mr. Beck, you're recognized.
Hi, my name is Joe Beck. I'm a local landkeep architect. I reside in downtown Fort Myers at 2531 Second Street, I'm part of Mr. Hammond's district. This is a non-agenda item. I've been called...
Sorry. That's okay.
Should I wait till the end?
You could talk, you're up here now, let's just... Okay, yeah.
When I order, I can wait till the end.
Other items, I just saw right-of-way and I didn't know there's 59 items on the agenda. I wanted to speak.
I'll wait till the end.
No problem, thank you, sir. Anyone else that wants to speak on the consent agenda that we just approved? Anyone would like to raise their hand? Okay, seeing none, come on up, sir, sorry.
I didn't fill out a card.
That's okay.
That's okay.
I mean, our opportunity is to fill out a card. It's helpful if we actually understand what you want to talk about. So I call you up at the right time, we want to take your comments into consideration. But thank you very much. Put your name on the record, that'd be great.
My name is Steve Stapleton. I'm at 6351 Coco, so I'm on the opposite side of Tidewater Island off of Island Park. And I'm a 30-year property owner on that street with two homes. I'm a full-time resident, it is of 2018. And I've been there, I went to the county meetings back in 2019 when they had all the meetings down here about clearing out Ten Mile Canal and putting drainage under Island Park back into the preserve, which, thank God, the county bought the preserve back then. It was up for a, they were talking about selling it to a realtor. But anyway, since then, the gentleman that spoke before me covered a lot of things, but Coco's Park and Plomosa were always the high spots on Island Park. Island Park was like a bull. All the water would come this way, sit, and then drain out when the Ten Mile Canal went down. But in the meetings in 2019 that I attended, when they were talking about cleaning out Ten Mile Canal, one of the gentlemen from the county told me that they had docks back there that weren't attached to the shore. They were going to take them out, they were going to, you know, and clear the canal out. Well, they dredged the canal from the channel markers back to Mullot Creek Marina, but to my knowledge, nothing's ever been done past that. The residents on Coco's, and when I lived on the other side of Coco's, Plomosa, we dredged out our own canals because of the sand twice. And we're back in the same position again where the sand is blocking the Tidewater Canal. We're going to have to dredge it. But since then, when they built KB Homes back there, right in front of the preserve, it started out as they raised, I think they raised the ground up eight foot is what the county gave them the exception for. I drove through the other day, well, the new FEMA regulation now is 14-foot, I believe. Well, some of the newer homes back there that they're building right now, the ground's built up 14 feet. And there's a subdivision right in front of that KB Homes that sits at 5.7 feet or 5.3 feet. Island Park is 5.7 feet. So when you drive back in there and you go around the corner, you look down and it looks like a mountain going down to where the preserve is. All that water that normally would drain back into that preserve is draining back to us now. And, you know, I have two sisters that live in the woodlands, one that lives on Park, and some of the people that live on Park are here. And again, Ian was an exception to the rule, we all know that. But the flooding that we get on Island Park now, even in a heavy rainstorm, the county came back and cleaned that road out. I think they actually cleaned Island Park right after Irma, I believe. But we got a five- or six-inch rain and the road never flooded because they cleaned all the ditches out. Prior to that, in 20 years, I've never seen them clean the ditches out. So I guess our biggest concern is with the airport expanding, which is a pretty huge expansion up there. That water comes down to Ten Mile Canal.
The red light's on, you only have three minutes to speak.
Okay.
Thank you for your comments.
Thanks.
We'll certainly have someone talk to you. Any other public comments on the consent agenda that we approved thus far? Go through all the cards, I don't see anything else. I'll close public comment, I'll bring it back up to the commission. We have a motion, we have a second. Any other discussion?
Sure, comment, there was a comment made about item number 11, the code enforcement fining. And obviously, the county doesn't want to be in there, have the perception look like there are more fining people. But this is because of a long term, for the last few years, we all seen, we have a few bad apples in the community that obviously do not pay attention to their property and we're having to increase the fines because you have people continue to run commercial businesses residential that fines are so low, they basically ignore it. So that outcry of the community, throughout the community, this is why we're addressing this. So thank you to staff for putting this together. Hopefully brings resolution. We don't want to, we're not here to collect money from people. We just want, obviously, people to be compliant, to be, obviously, to their neighbors and not run commercial business residential and many other violations. We have a couple of structures in the county that are still sitting there now dormant, abandoned, and it's just eyesore to the community, it's a health and safety issue. So that's why we're addressing that. As far as 22, Cana Mandra, you know, I've seen you've talked to the speakers about the Island Park. Maybe staff can get with them and address some of that concern about as far as Island Park and some things are brought up. And also, like, I just heard of the airport expansion. So the expansion we're doing at RSW right now is expansion of the current terminal, so there's no other water management expansion there. So the expansion of the internal of the airport, that could affect the water flows to the Ten Mile Canal. So, but if you could get with the speakers and have staff get with them to provide information so we can communicate with the residents as to what's going on. And as far as the height of the people building new homes, that's something we don't really have control. That's other federal mandates, the staff can address that too, that they're building that based upon the flood level. Obviously, the festival had put in based upon the shoreline. That's why those houses, those elevations are being raised, stuff like that. So anyway, just get the information to the residents to understand what's going on and what we can do to improve that. And obviously, Ten Mile Canal is a concern for all of us. And anything we can do to improve that flow of water without flooding more people, that'd be great. If your staff wants to address the item number 22 too, about how that's going to affect the area downstream in Island Park.
Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
On your first comment, yes, we have been out to Island Park a number of times and I suggested to the two gentlemen that we would do the same again is to go out, take our staff into the community and talk to them about their concerns and what the county is doing. In regards to the item itself, item number 22, I'd like to ask Mr. Adalini to come up and present that item to you.
Sure. Good morning, Commissioners. Roland Adalini, Natural Resources. The area of this industrial park is at US 41, the east side of 41, where just north of where it intersects the Ten Mile Canal, just south of Young Quist Road. It's a older industrial park that receives frequent flooding, chronic flooding. Anytime we have a major rainfall event, the water sits there. If you recall, residents, I'm sorry, owners from different businesses, like some automotive shops. I think gymnastics world is here, there's an antique store. There were several that came out and mentioned about they're actually importing water from Ten Mile Canal. And so what these are, the system that they drain to, stormwater pond they drain to, then dumps into Ten Mile Canal. What these backflow preventers do is they're actually inline check valves. So it prevents when the Ten Mile Canal goes up, it prevents the water actually being going into the system. So when the water level in Ten Mile goes down, they can then have positive drainage. So if anything, there's less water going out of this system. It's not being flushed in and out of this community. So this is, you know, this is the second set of six culverts we've put totally. We have six total and this is the second set of three backflow preventers, along with the associated headwall works and fill and what have you. So that's, if you have any other questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Any questions, Roland?
Chairman, may I?
Absolutely.
Yeah, so Mr. Adalini, question. We have been looking at this since basically after Hurricane Irma in 2017. Is this the final project in the master plan look that we kind of took at this drainage system after the hurricane? Are there more projects planned?
Yes, there's, well, in terms of the industrial park, this will take care of this local problem that was identified in that study that we did. Now, there is, out of the mitigation plan, there are several improvements in Ten Mile Canal that we're looking at. We have Johnson Engineering on board now. They did the geotechnical work and the survey work in Ten Mile Canal. They're looking at different scenarios of dredging, widening, debris removal, what have you because we are now going to pursue federal funding for the actual work in Ten Mile Canal.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Adalini. So Commissioners, it sounds like this is definitely a good project to approve today because this will help one piece of, one part of the community, the industrial park that floods. This will help with keeping water from flowing back into that industrial park. So I think this is a good item to pass today. But the other good news is, so this is part of a greater plan that we've been working on since after Hurricane Irma. It sounds like there are more parts of that plan that haven't been enacted yet. Commissioners, I would love to have a workshop real quick where they could kind of show us, just give us an update. So how far have we come on the plan since it was created and finished? And then how far do we have left to go? What are some of the funding sources that we have to pay for it? You know, drainage is one of those things, I'm so impressed when some people can just look at an area and see how the water's going to flow. I don't have that talent. So I would love to see a presentation from staff, maybe in a workshop format, where we could all get an idea of what's left to accomplish, what other projects we could fund, and then keep the ball moving forward on this because it's an important community. Stopping the flooding down there is an important thing. It sounds like it's always going to be a battle. And maybe because flood control is a primary responsibility of the South Florida Water Management District, after we have that workshop and we kind of have an idea of where we are, maybe we engage them as well to help us solve some of these problems. So that's my thought.
Mr. Chairman. I just wanted you to know this is in the middle of my district as well and to staff's credit from my orientation meeting, from being...
And then to staff's credit from my orientation meeting, from being sworn in forward, we've been talking about this subject and we're putting together a presentation for community outreach that I expected to attend with the group if we were doing something actually in the field. But I, I think your plan is an upgrade to that. But I want you to, I want the citizens that spoke today to know that I'm paying attention to this and gathering the information so that we can find out what opportunities we might have for you. But it's, it's definitely a critical path item for us, so.
Mr. Chair. Thank you. Regards to the workshop, I would like to request to allow us to finish the Johnson Engineering study so we will, we will have some more information to bring back to you. And then we will do that, Roland, do you have a timeframe of when that study will be complete?
Well, we're doing the early work. We still have to do the benefit cost analysis based on amount of inundation. We're looking at different options and how much area would be either remaining still in the flood, flood zone or not. So we're looking a few more, you know, probably a couple more months to get that squared away.
Can we get it finished this year, though?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
We will do it this year. I just wanted to let you know it'd be a couple of months because of the study. And as you know, we did the initial flood mitigation study a number of, probably a couple of years ago. And there are some issues specific to Ten Mile Canal that we would need to talk to you about and address that have major impacts to the community. So those are some of the discussions we'll need to have.
If I may, if the, our discussions have been about doing something in the community again, I got some very positive feedback of the residents by having that participation from staff and having those questions and answers in the field, that was very well received. Now we're in high season, so maybe there's a chance to do a two-point-oh version of that as an interim step. And I would love to have your support on that.
Big comments, any other? Good points, any other discussion? Any objections? Now we'll go to items that were pulled. I'll lead off with number six. Number six is the financial reports given by Clerk's Office, very happy that he's able to do so. However, there's been some media concerns, certainly some things that Mr. Khan highlighted in his report. Listen, all I could tell you is that in the eighteen years of me doing this, and when you work for a municipality, cash flow's always been an issue, especially after a storm, okay? We have this unprecedented amount of responses we need to do. Obviously, Ian was not even contemplated on anyone's radar. We have great reserves, but unfortunately, we don't have unlimited reserves. So, you know, what you run into is that you have a responsibility to respond, right? And Ian certainly costs billions and billions of dollars to this community. And even where you have participation and great assistance from the state or the federal government, many times we're required to put in our core share. Many times, we were able to obviously do that. But with Ian, Helene, Milton, it becomes a cash flow issue. I don't care who you are and how you are, we balance a budget. So we're, unlike the federal government, we don't just print money, we actually live within our means. So we do not necessarily look to borrow any more money than we have to. There's a cost associated with that. So it's not uncommon, in all the years I was in Sanibel, I have a small budget. What you do for cash flow is you have an off, you have a general fund, and you have a whole bunch of enterprise funds. You collect fees. It's always cheapest, even in households, to use your own funds first and borrow, especially without a cost. That's basically what we do. The clerk indicated that at one point in time, we certainly ran into some really tight cash flow situations. That's not uncommon. Again, you know, he had indicated he had never seen in his time here, I can assure the public in eighteen years of doing this, as someone that's been in the financial world, I can assure you, it's not unprecedented that we did this. What we did was borrow some money from an enterprise fund in lieu of trying to obviously tap any type of lines of credit that were established or anything of that nature. So think of it this way, you have your savings, okay, and you run your household. When your household runs out of money, what do you do? You go to your savings, that's normally done. It's exactly what we did. It's unfortunate because not only did the clerk actually write a report, the media has it. And honestly, we're running this as prudent as you've all elected us to do. We're staying within our means, we're balancing our budget. But when we do internal borrowings, I can assure you, and all the outside accounts have done this, it was very common in all the storms, having been involved in government for eleven storms. We did that very often in Sanibel, it's very common to do. I'm sure that every municipality is doing exactly this, whether it's Fort Myers Beach or Sanibel. The clerk wanted to bring it to our attention, and I respect what the clerk said, I truly do. However, you know, it went out, it's now in the media, and I want to assure everyone in this room, I want to assure the Commissioners, this is not something I've certainly worked very closely with. Mr. Winton, he's done a great job. He certainly indicated, we get reports on a weekly basis, indicate what cash flow we have and how we look. And listen, your timing issue is fiscal year and September thirtieth. Adverrum taxes come in November thirtieth in the perfect world. Certain people pay us then, and then you have discounts you receive, that's the greatest discount. You pay it in December, you pay it in January, you get less of a discount, but you still do get a discount. So trying to predict, understand cash flows, as this storm has hit this community in unprecedented ways, they might not have had the ability to pay our real estate taxes. Because they're trying to deal with insurance, they didn't get their claims, they're trying to fix their properties. It's just life. And people, I could just assure you, we took money out of other accounts that we have, okay? It's the money we have, we didn't use it for long term, but we think it's always prudent not to incur any additional expenses, not to incur any additional burdens that we have, we have enough issues to deal with. But buying, borrowing internally for a week or two weeks is not unprecedented, especially in the month of November. I just want to assure you that. That's why I pulled the item, because again, I've been asked by the media to speak about this. You know, we received correspondence from the county manager, certainly talked with Mr. Winton. I can assure everyone in this room, there's not an issue whatsoever. But storms of Ian, Milton, Helene just take us to certain proportions, certain areas where we do have a cash flow issue. And that's not unprecedented, that's not normal for us to do so. But what we do is try to borrow internally. So it's almost like if you borrowed money from your savings account, you owe your savings account money. And people that try to live within their means, when they have an opportunity to get some additional cash, they put the money back in the savings account. I can assure you, the simplest, because I've tried to explain that, that's what has occurred here. We do not have any cash flow issues now. It's January, obviously seventy, eighty, ninety percent of our adverrum taxes come in. So we have a lot more cash flow as a result of it. But again, when you have back-to-back-to-back storms, it's just difficult potentially manage cash flow, do what we need to do, live within our means. And, you know, for the media that certainly wanted to know something, I've explained the situation as best I can. I wanted to assure the rest of the Commissioners, they all got the same correspondence I did from the county manager and Mr. Winton. But I really wanted to try to get in front of a situation. I appreciate Mr. Khan's report. Again, in his brief time of being here, he may not have experienced this. I can assure everyone, in the fourteen years on Sanibel, it's probably a very often occurrence, whether it was Charlie, Ian, Wilmer, Jane, there were so many storms, it was unprecedented. And we didn't have the type of assistance we do today. Again, when you look at Helene and Milton, the areas that it hit, okay, and where it went across multiple states, is this, again, just the size of the storms, the issues we're dealing with. And again, I want to assure each and every person in the audience that it's not uncommon that what we did. Appreciate the comments from the clerk. I think it was a little premature, and certainly it's unfortunate, it's at the media, I wanted to do something. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Chairman, for bringing it. I, twelve years I've been here, we give this the monthly report, everything's transparent, everything's public record. So I'm really surprised, I remember back in December of two thousand and twelve, when I first checked this office, we had lost forty-eight percent of our tax revenue because of the recession. We're having used money out of twenty-twenty to keep the lights on, to keep the bridge to operators, to keep paramedics on the road. So there's always a transfer of money, our accounts are very liquid, and they move day to day, every minute they're, they're changing. But in my experience of being here, working with Clerk Green and Clerk Doggett, we never had an issue with something that was forwarded to the media before I got it. But obviously, this is a different day, but I'm okay passing this. We do this every month, we've been doing it for the last twelve years I've been here, and it's never been an issue. So it's really surprising, of course, I knew about the media, which obviously, it's all, everything's very transparent. It's on their website, it's very public record, so it's not a surprise to me. But I guess somebody wants to be in the news, but I'm happy moving the item, so.
So am I, just, I don't know if there's any other comments. But I certainly wanted to just make it known what the issue was, why it happened. And again, I appreciate Commissioner Penagras' comments, having been here with Commissioner Hammond as long as he has. But in the Clerk's brief time of being here, he hadn't seen it, thought it was very unusual. I appreciate the update and comment, but, you know, I don't want the media to certainly sensationalize something, that's not an issue. I can assure you, not only do we, you know, we deal with our budget issues, we're very transparent. All his reports are on a monthly basis, they're transparent. But as Commissioner Penagras had indicated, you know, we might have plus or minus a hundred million dollars in our general fund reserves. When we go across enterprise funds, you're talking about six and seven hundred million dollars. The balances, as they're called, beginning balances they have. So, you know, do we want to borrow the money internally for two weeks? Or do we want to go out and incur a burden that we all have to pay for? I try to simplify that as much as possible. Any other comments?
Just for the record, I'll be brief. This, this to me, again, as a business owner, there's days that you, you have a draw come in, or a customer bounces a check to you, or somebody pays you late, and you have to fill out money internally to cover a balance. This is not very complicated, in my opinion. I don't know where the sensationalism or drama was brought out on this in the email that wasn't copied to staff originally. But I was gonna ask staff if they'd like to speak to their communications with the Clerk's Office and how that process works, so.
Mr. Chair.
Sure.
I'd like to ask Mr. Winton to discuss our, our relationship with the Clerk's staff.
Commissioners, yes, this was a, this was a cash issue, not a budget issue. I think Commissioner, Chairman Ruane described it very well. We receive our significant revenues in late November and December, starting then. And so for one day, and we're, we're in constant contact with Clerk's Finance on a daily basis. For one day, we were having a cash issue, cash flow issue, which the fix for that is, we were gonna make a transfer to another entity that is funded through the general fund. The fix for that is you don't make the transfer. And then how we overcame that is we went ahead and transferred that twenty-five million dollar loan that we received from the state for Ian into the general fund. So we have met subsequently with Clerk's staff and talked about, you know, with the size of the general fund, the fact that you're not receiving significant revenues for a couple of months. You know, what are, what are things we can do to make sure that we do draws at the appropriate times, that we do transfers at the appropriate times? There's no entity that is responsible for this, it's just something that we have to coordinate going forward. So what we, a lot of entities have a line of credit to get them going at the beginning of the year. We don't do that, I don't anticipate doing that at this point. But we, we certainly have a plan if we, if we get into this situation again. Like I said, it was very temporary, and Clerk's staff and the county staff were in contact with each other. This was not a surprise to anybody.
Thank you, Mr. Winton. You've done a great job of keeping us up to breast. And honestly, I really respect and appreciate the Commission has been here a long time. Can't imagine what you all went through back in yesteryear and what you gotta do with cash flow. But this issue is an issue that is, is normal, it happens in households, it happens in businesses, it happens in government. And all I could tell you is, having done eighteen budgets, it's something that I dealt with very commonly in Sanibel because we have a big county here, Sanibel's a small municipality. We borrowed money very regularly when we had unprecedented demands after storms.
Just one last question. So, so the twenty-five million dollar loan from the state after Hurricane Ian that you used to float the, to make up for this cash shortfall?
Correct.
That was, that was actually the exact purpose of that twenty-five million dollars, right? Was to help with any revenue shortfalls?
Correct.
Okay, so we used money that was given to us from the state to cover revenue shortfalls, to cover a revenue shortfall? Sounded like, right? Okay, all right, so that sounds like you did a good job, then. Just to kind of put it in household terms, the way we work at your house, so, you know, it's basically, your payday came later than your bills were due. So your, you know, our, our budget year starts on October first, and we had some bills that were due on October first. But we don't get paid typically till the end of November, when the property taxes are paid. So we had to use the money that we had on hand to pay the bills that were due. And we had to use this loan from the state that was meant to help us with cash flow until we got paid in November thirtieth. And then when we got paid, we paid that back and put everything back where it was, right? Is that a fair analogy?
Commissioners, yes, Commissioner, that's, the, the loan has gone into the general fund. So it was used for cash flow, it's now, that money's now back in the general fund. It will be used for operations as, as you all adopted in the budget.
Okay, and is that what we plan to do with the budget?
Yes.
It is?
And we just, Commissioners, we just hadn't made that transfer yet.
Okay.
At hindsight twenty-twenty, we should have made that transfer probably a little earlier.
Okay, all right, well then, thanks very much. I, I think, you know, that's, that's what it is, payday came later than the bills were due. And just like you do at your own house, sometimes you'll have to put it on a credit card and then pay that credit card off or use your savings account for a minute and then put it back in the savings account. But it, it sounded like that's what the problem was.
And just, I appreciate Commissioner Hammond, but just one other thing for the record. When we went to the state, this body recognized the situation we'd come with. The loan that we actually got from the state, we put in reserves. But the loan has a zero percent interest cost and certainly has at least eight years to have it paid back. So again, the zero percent works for all of us here, state's been nice to be our partner. This body was proactive, making sure we asked for the cash flow issues we anticipated to have. They were in reserves, we moved them over. Again, sorry about any anxiety that this may have caused. But this is a way that households do their business, businesses do their business, and government do their business. And quite frankly, I'm grateful for my Commissioners I work with very closely that anticipated these types of issues and asked a legislator for assistance. Thank you all.
That's what I'm saying, this is actually good planning, if you look back, and I'm glad we could talk about this now. We go back, I remember with May or June, and when the staff brought this to us and we accepted that money, the state was generous to get that money to us because we're planning ahead at no cost, the taxpayer, that's really the most important thing. It's unfortunate, some people are not looking so, beyond that, at least we're planning ahead, we're actually planning for the future. And we did that, we did it fiscally sound, so, thank you. Thank you to staff for doing that.
Okay. I've made a motion to move the item, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second, any public comments? See none, I'll close public comments, I'll bring it back up here, any other discussion? I appreciate the comments from all the Commissioners, great points, thank you, staff. Anyone object? See none, motion carries unanimously. I have addressed the issue, I wanted to pull Commissioner Maltz, your item.
All right, well, thank you. So, gentlemen, items nine on ten are the other items that I, first, first two or three items that I pulled, but they're essentially the same subject matter, just two different storms. So the, the discussion I was hoping to have about these items is regarding the state of local emergency. And we had talked about this briefly at, at a previous meeting. And then the Hurricane Ian state of emergency was celebrated to have been moved recently, right? And we signed a, we extended these two resolutions in early December. Now, I guess my, the premise of my main question is, when does a state of emergency end, right? Because when we, when we do a state of emergency, in good faith, the way it's written in our county ordinance, under certain circumstances, a quorum of the board may not be able, available to declare a state of local emergency. And we have the authority to waive procedures and formalities otherwise required of political subdivisions in order to take whatever action is necessary to ensure the health, safety, and welfare of the community, right? So when we're in a state of emergency and we're, we're running the county from the EOC, right? I think we all agree that it's pretty easy to approve that, right? Because we can't have a committee meeting and a focus group about every, and a vote about every decision that needs to be made under duress, right? I mean, that's what emergency operations, the definition of emergency room triage conditions are. And I think we all are okay with that. But the measure was put in place to, originally, when it was written, to be a seven-day-at-a-time ordinance. And what I'm basically asking, and thanks to our good President Trump and his inauguration yesterday, hitting the reset button on so many good things, I would like to make a motion that we restore and reverse the delegation of our rights to the staff under a state emergency and take back our normal procedures of checks and balances to our systems. I don't think there's any item that is under duress right now that can't be managed in two-week increments that we meet in right now. I think if we had to be called to a state of emergency tomorrow for something that was unforeseen, that we could all reconvene under a reasonable timeframe or otherwise. And I would just like to see the procedures for procurement and other measures that are affected by our delegation of these authorities abroad. And I would like to see them restored back to the system that we have in place per charter.
Look, questions just for clarity. So, you know, first and foremost, the state of emergency that's initially passed, recognized... So, you know, first and foremost, the state of emergency that's initially passed recognizes that the five commissioners may not be together for a period of time. We addressed what the period of time might be thereafter. And again, I'll ask for any assistance from the county attorney. We do temporarily give Mr. Hardner the responsibility. We do quickly take that responsibility back. Reporting requirements are within thirty days. We're together. But the state of emergency going forward, as it's been continued week after week after week, is certainly set up to allow us to continue to operate, to try to advocate, to continue to get funding for the various items. And I think it's a prerequisite, County Attorney, please help me if I'm stating anything that's incorrect, prerequisite to continue to receive funding. So there's, the order is recognizing temporarily that we have a situation where the five of us may not be together. It may not be a quorum necessary. You make those decisions. Thereafter, when we come back to it, being back at the commission level, the state of emergency is a prerequisite or requisite to make sure we'll continue to get funded.
Mr. Chairman?
Can you please?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, as you're aware, under Chapter two fifty-two, the state legislature has afforded political subdivisions the opportunity to declare local states of emergency. That legislation also places a seven-day limitation on any singular declaration. That's why you see these back before you at, at every meeting, to not only extend the local state of emergency, but to ratify and confirm those states of local emergency that are executed by the chairman in the absence of a board meeting. The primary purpose for the extension of the states of local emergency at this time is to facilitate, as I understand it, federal reimbursement funding and to expedite that process under FEMA's, FEMA's laws and ordinances. So, for that, on that basis, I, I think you certainly want to hear from administration. But that's why you see these back on your agenda. One, in furtherance of state statute that requires ratification every seven days, and then also compliance with your local ordinance.
So just for clarity, you know, and I was trying to say that, you said it much more eloquently than I did. But as we continue to still have receivables from FEMA, we still have issues that need to come in, that state of emergency will exist. It's every seven days, this body doesn't meet every seven days, but allows the flexibility for the chairman in that interim meeting, first to third, the second week, to be able to obviously address any issues, move forward with that. Is that?
Yes, sir. And out of an abundance of caution, that's why we place these items on your agenda for the board to ratify the chairman's actions, so that in the event that the board would like to go in a different direction, you have that opportunity. But today's action is to ratify past actions by the chairman pursuant to delegated authority and to continue the state of local emergency for FEMA reimbursement purposes.
Good, I'll turn it back to you.
All right, so, I have a few more questions then, and we can, please, if you'll help me this, Mr. County Attorney. If the sole reason for the sole is, is in place is so that we can seek reimbursement of funding or pursue grants to get additional funding for different matters, it's for revenue generation purposes is what you're trying to protect us from, the ability to receive those funds and qualify for those grants?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, in the sense that under FEMA's rules, regulations, and guidelines, a state of local emergency has to exist in order to continue to participate.
Just one further clarification, if I may. It is not only, so it's grants, but it's also the reimbursement for money that we have to advance to procure a particular vendor, to obviously allow us to move forward. So we are trying to obviously collect some of our receivables as well. That's why the state has helped us a great deal with cash flow issues. FEMA is very, very low, and the state has helped us with trying to receive another loan of three hundred and fifty million dollars over ten-year period of time at zero cost to obviously cash flow these issues. But my understanding of the local ordinance is that's a requirement as long as we continue, A, look for grants, but B, reimbursements. I state that correctly, sir?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, if I may, just also, in the past, the board has expressed some concerns about emergency expenditures, and I believe that's what gave rise to the report that administration furnishes on a thirty-day basis. But again, I would defer to administration. But the primary focus of the extension of the states of local emergency is to allow for continued participation in federal reimbursement programs.
All right, so gentlemen, the, the goal of my, this point of this discussion today is certainly not to stand in the way of those two items, right? Not reimbursements and not funding, not grants. I mean, I would never propose anything that would jeopardize any of those things, of course. The intent of my discussion is to have the authority on how we spend the money coming from us, right? It's not the participation. It's that we've delegated our authority to make those decisions. And right now, if that, if a continuous seven-day resolution, string of resolutions were required, then I'm, we have an item today on number thirty-one on the agenda right now that's being funded by Hurricane Irma that we resurrected, which I think staff should be commended for, that they, they resurrected a million-dollar grant out of the ashes and, and to our, to the benefit of us for a project for a generator at Hayman Stadium. But we're not under a seven-day repeat clock for Irma, but yet we were still able to get funding for that. So, I pulled the, some of the grants. I'm not going to claim to be an expert by any means, but I, I, from what I have seen and speaking to the state D E M, they, the state of emergency that matters the most is the governors in the state of Florida. All the references to the storms are always based on the governors, and then a federal declaration from the president. Those are the drivers of FEMA money and the drivers of state money are from the governor. So, the only time that they told me in a briefing I was on with the state was that we have to have a local state of emergency to qualify is if the emergency is solely within the boundaries of Lee County. So, there may be a different perception, maybe there's some research or follow-up to do, to be considered on that, to, to speak with the counsel at Tallahassee on this matters. And if somebody has grants that say that the local state of emergency must be required for this particular endeavor, I would be pleased to review that. So, maybe my motion could be, or the topic of today could be to modify the motion to just be the blanket authorization and just restrict it to the matters that we want to make sure that we don't get in the way of, which is reimbursements and revenues. But taking back the authority for the rest of it.
Just want some additional clarity, County Attorney, if I may.
Does that make sense?
I have a question.
If I may, so, maybe you could describe when the state of emergency is by the governor and the president, what, as a municipality in the region that's been affected, what's required for us to do to be able to participate in all this? And, you know, there's always a question of, you know, Irma happened five years ago, you know, what's, Ian happened two and a half years ago. We still have those, obviously, state of emergencies. So perhaps you could just talk about what our requirements are, when it's passed by the state and our federal government, and how do we protect ourselves, how we allow the opportunity for continued reimbursement, and why it's necessary locally?
Certainly. Certainly, under the statute, there's a two-tiered system. And, and as we know, the state has certain emergency powers to respond to locals or to statewide instances of emergency. The legislature has also conferred that authority upon local governments. And that legislative authority is specifically contained within Chapter two hundred and fifty-two, which allows the counties through home rule and a delegation of home rule authority to regulate conduct within its own jurisdiction. I, I was certainly not privy to the conversation with F D E M, and I would be happy to follow up on that. However, I would point out that I, I would hate for Lee County or any other county to be in a circumstance where the state, for statewide interests and purposes, allowed a state of local emergency to expire. However, the local government is still working to recover on that local basis. And not have a state of local emergency in place, which would then trip us up with FEMA. I understand, or I think I understand, the commissioner's concerns is with regard to purchasing authority under the state of local emergency. And to that extent, you know, I, I would remind the board that under a, a non-state of local emergency, the administrator's purchasing authority is limited to a hundred thousand dollars. Under a state of local emergency, it is what's necessary in order to respond to the emergency. And then the adminis, the manager responds to the board with an expenditure report. With regard, again, circling back to the beginning of this discussion, I still believe it's in the best interest of Lee County to maintain its own local state of emergency in order to protect local issues that may or may not continue to be addressed by the state under their state local emergency.
Thank you. So, thank you, Commissioner, for bringing this up. I, I didn't know about this till we sat down. I think it was sent out from your office at nine eighteen, so I didn't get a chance until I got, at nine thirty, that this was even on the agenda. So, if I didn't know about this yesterday, or Mr. Oco usually predicts a commissioner audit, but I just pulled this at four o'clock the day before, I could have got with staff to feel more comfortable. Right now, I don't feel comfortable. I like change, but without knowing all the parameters of the changes, I'm not sure how, I don't feel comfortable, because I would have had a chance to get with staff on either side to get more questions. So, that's my concern today about making changes based upon what's, other than this on the agenda motion.
So, so can, can I amend my motion or just withdraw for, for a moment, please? I will also agree that the challenge in the timing, we get our, we get an agenda with sixty-five things on it on a Friday, right? And then everybody's gone, and it's a holiday yesterday, so there was not much time to speak with staff. I did, I did attempt to reach out to some staff members over the weekend and had some brief discussions, but it wasn't a thorough one, I, I agree. If this conversation just puts this item on the table, and that can be, can bring it back up for next meeting to follow up and get some real drill down on this, to get, get the facts laid before us, I'm just trying to reinstate our authorities as board members and to, so that we can be responsible for our section balance system that we have in place right now and make sure that, when I, in, in my business, when I approve something, it's so that it can happen tomorrow. I say yes today, so you, you can do it next, right? That's what an approval is. Ratifying something that somebody already spent that you did or didn't agree with, after the fact, you, you don't have a choice in how those matters were spent, what somebody thought an emergency was, how they thought the intent of the board may have been last year, two years ago, and how they're governing themselves today. Without that feedback or input, then I think we're at a loss until we're reacting to it at the end of the agenda. Again, the next month, we're, it's Friday night and Tuesday morning, you know, to get your arms around these questions. So that's where some of my challenges have been with that. Have you, would you agree? So, if there's a way to amend it in the future to discuss items that, it's a way to amend the, our local weekly ordinance to be, to make sure that we're not including ourselves from a state or federal reimbursement or grant program of any kind, I would never want to restrict our ability to ask for help or earn those merits of those programs. I would never stand in the way of that, for the record. I just want to make sure that we are the decision makers, because we're going to get all the credit for it anyway, as I've heard before, right? We might as well make it, one, that we made an informed decision on ahead of time and not after the fact, as often as we can. That's really my point with those items.
Chairman, if I may, thank you. I think this is an issue that we had several years ago about trying to decide or make a decision on how, how long that state of emergency needed to be. I, I remember, you know, remember we had all the discussion. So I think we all had concern about that. It's like, how long do we continue to go with that? We had the same concerns two and a half years ago, two years ago. So, I'm glad you brought it up, because I think it, we do need to be able to look forward and, and, and real, be able to make a decision to bring that power back to the board. So, I appreciate you bringing it up, but I, I do think it's going to require, at least from my end, a little more information on making sure that we're capturing all the dollars and everything we can from FEMA before we make that decision.
And if a workshop is appropriate, and if a right mechanism for this versus another board meeting item, I'm open to your experience and feedback on a, on a delivery mechanism, or County Attorney guidance on the matter.
Richard, so.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. I just want to say, you know, I do support taking a harder look at this, because, you know, I mean, we, the words, the words common sense were said so many times yesterday as we inaugurated with the president. And, and I, I just think this is another one of those deals where common sense would tell you, yes, we are still paying for things related to Hurricane Helene and Hurricane Milton, but no, we're not in a state of emergency anymore. There is, we could return to regular order and approvals, I believe, for how we make those expenditures and deal with anything that's left over from Hurricane Milton and Helene. And I think you diminish the idea of a state of local emergency by saying that it's just going to be perpetual. And so, I, I do think we need to get some more information on why we're choosing to do it this way and look at, look to see if there is an alternative to have a state of local emergency when there is truly an active emergency. Like you said, when we're running the county out of the emergency operational, that makes a tremendous amount of sense. But once we've returned back to our normal meeting schedule, and there's no issues with getting the five of us together, that just makes common sense, that we would return back to the normal order. I, I would definitely like to hear from a FEMA expert to hear truthfully, this is the question very specifically, does our FEMA reimbursement hinge on the fact that we have to be under a perpetual state of emergency? Or does the presidential declaration of state of local, or state of emergency cover that? Knowing that we were truly under a state of local emergency during the active part of the emergency, but now we filed the paperwork, we've followed the FEMA rules and regulations, we've cleaned up, and we're awaiting our reimbursement. I would have to think with the amount of documentation we turn in to FEMA, that we're probably covered, that they're going to reimburse us, because we, they've got the receipts, if you will. So that's just my thoughts on it. I, I'd love to get back to a more common sense approach, where it just seems to make sense that, you know, when you're in an emergency, you declare it, and then when the emergency is over, and you can get back to regular order, you get back to regular.
Still manage your business after, of the emergency after that.
Yeah.
I have the Helene grant right here printed.
So, so perhaps maybe a step forward, as I've listened, I run across the DA's in this regard. And I do respect the County Attorney's clarity, especially if we have something we're pursuing at a local level where the state indicates it's not required anymore, it may be advantageous to us. But I think this is a conversation, and I appreciate both commissioners indicating that we might need some further direction. But we do have an opportunity. I think what's prudent is for the commissioner to meet with County Manager, County Attorney, and perhaps maybe, since we're having a strategic planning, maybe twenty minutes or thirty minutes, whatever you feel necessary, we can certainly bring that back up, you know, you know, and, and have a discussion with the five of us. We can certainly come and do whatever we need to do as a result of that. But we have a strategic planning meeting, which we sit down, the five of us, every year. It's an item, and again, I think each one up here is looking to do whatever we can from an enhancement point of view. We learned an awful lot from Ian, we've tightened up the timeframes on one, we get various documentation, and can't imagine you've done a great job of doing that. I know you pride yourself and bring everything to us. But listen, there's always opportunities to talk about something, to vet something, the five of us are together, and make sure any tweaks that we might do are talked out, you know, obviously, and, and we could do that. So, if that makes sense to commissioners, that obviously, the commission can meet with the County Manager and County Attorney, maybe describe the issues that obviously we have, talk about the issues for a local emergency, you know, obviously, federal and state, why it's necessary, and then maybe condense that to a conversation that we can have at the strategic planning meeting. That's the quickest thing, I think, that we have, considering it's the twenty-first of January, strategic planning meeting is, is very soon, and we could have a robust conversation. Does that seem reasonable to everyone up here?
Absolutely.
Any attorney, would you like me to make that a motion?
Not necessarily, sir. I think we understand the board's direction.
Just want to make sure, you know, does that satisfy you?
And just to clarify, this was not a reflection on any staff interaction I've ever had, right? This is really, maybe I'm a little pumped up today, being an extra patriotic today after yesterday's, so many things. But just to restore good government, again, we want to be efficient in our government, we want to be responsible for our decisions, we want to make sure we're listening to the people and the taxpayers, and making sure that we're doing the jobs that we're responsible for to the best of our ability with the best information we can. That's really all I was trying to get to today, so I'm happy to continue the conversation. And then that'll be a good segue into my next agenda item.
Great conversation. County Attorney, I appreciate your input. Certainly look forward to you and the County Manager continuing to do that. I mean, our goal is always for transparency. I think we continue to have dramatic improvements. I can't commend the County Manager enough for the continued improvements he's done. And again, you know, we've, we've been benefiting since Ian a great deal. We could certainly have further conversations about this, and we could tweak this. I think your points are valid, Commissioner, and certainly want to make sure we get this down. down. But with that in mind, we'll move on to your next item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
We need to take action on number nine, correct?
Mr. Chairman, exactly my point. We would respectfully request passage of these items today so that the status quo can be continued until we have the opportunity to have the discussion you outlawed.
Thank you, Commissioner Penegras. Thank you, county attorney.
In good faith, why don't you let me make the motion for this, to approve those two for today, and just before we approve any more, that it'll be after we have this conversation we just agreed to have, as needed, you know?
When is strategic planning?
Actually, let me just, let me just step back. Let me just, motion to approve.
Thank you, sir.
I have a motion on the floor. I have a second about the public comment.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Commissioners, Marsha Ellis for the record, and I found this conversation very informative because the perpetual state of emergency that it seems like that we're in has been a real cause of concern for the public. And we've had, we've had conversations in our neighborhood about what this means for us because we have a, we have Wild Turkey Strand nearby. And I think it's really important that we have the best, most robust emergency plan in place so that we know what we're doing ahead of time. And all of that investment should be on the front end and things laid out with clarity so that public perceptions of decision-making aren't coming into play, all right? This is particularly important when it comes to debris management, right? And making sure that we're safeguarding that public perception. And the reason I say that is because the way and where we manage air debris is a big concern to the public. And for instance, we've had, after Charlie, we had debris dumped on Wild Turkey, and then later, that was used as a reason to take those lands claiming that they were, they had somehow been degraded. We had an issue with Deep Lagoon, which was another lands being used for debris management. And there have been conversations that have come up in the community to make sure that there are plans in place as part of our emergency planning, and there's land that's been identified so that our resources are being managed properly. And this really comes down to having that emergency plan in place ahead of time and making sure that it's full of contingencies, that we have contracts in place to manage air debris, so that perceptions and impropriety aren't called into question and that debris is managed responsibly and that we're not using those excuses of duress to have bad practices put in place in our community. Thank you.
So, just a, some clarity. I appreciate the comments, you know, in, in what we, we do. And, you know, we certainly go out of our way to address those issues. We were awarded nineteen point three million dollars from U.S. Department of Emergency Protection. We did have a plan for Hurricane Ian. We developed this, this board work through process. We were fully transparent to the public and had a series of unprecedented amount of meetings to be with the public. As a result of the grant we received, we're going to continue to update Helene and Milton. I think prior to Ian, we didn't have a storm of that proportion. I think the world experienced something, whether something's changing or not, but we obviously now have dealt with things that, you know, were unprecedented in the past. Ian certainly was a storm, in my humble opinion. I don't know that, no matter what plan we had, we would have been in place. The state certainly adjusted, the federal government adjusted. And then when you look at Helene and Milton, when it tore through states, again, many states had to deal with this issue. So, I'm grateful of nineteen point three million dollar grant we received from the Department of Emergency Management. It was a byproduct of the plan we had in place. We recognize enhancements that are necessary. We'll continue to work through that process, and I really applaud everyone. I appreciate the speaker's comment. Any other public comments?
Good morning. Joyce Campana, resident of Lee County, Fort Myers. In the discussion about the renewal of the emergency, state of emergency, you've talked about grants and, and that type of thing. I would like some assurance and insurance that if you don't keep renewing that state of emergency, it doesn't have an impact on local FEMA policy holders. I don't know if it does or doesn't, but that is a concern that I did not hear addressed up here of whether or not it impacts the local holder as well as the Lee County government reimbursements.
Ma'am, the, the point of my motion was simply to...
But, but that's something to maybe put on the agenda for the workshop. I, I know the county attorney was very explicit and very clear in his explanation, and all I'm saying is, let's just make sure that anything you do does not impact the individual resident. Like I said, I don't know if it does or doesn't. I do know FEMA's got a lot of directions and instructions and requirements. That's just something to put on the list. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any other public comments? You know, I think the conversation that took place at the DA's was having a conversation specific on point, is there a need for local that obviously is necessary? And that's really the rub, is it, is FEMA's or federal state of emergency comprehensive enough? Is state comprehensive enough? And do we need to have any additional assurances, any type of additional things to obviously protect us locally and make sure as we represent the people, we do so? So, with that in mind, I excuse myself, I have to step out. Excuse me.
Thank you.
Okay, we move to the next item, number, oh, wait. Yeah, we have a, we have a motion in a second. Any public comment on this item, number nine?
I think we just took that.
Okay. Any objection? Okay.
I'm sure we need item ten.
I know, I was going to call number ten next. So, item number ten?
Motion to approve, item ten.
A second.
We have motion second. Any public comment on item number ten in the consent agenda? Okay, come back to board, any objection? No objection, okay. Number thirty-nine was pulled also.
Okay, so that was all a good segue to number thirty-nine. If you'll remember, the day we were sworn in on November nineteenth, there was a walk-on item for seven and a half million dollars to do island cleanup cost, and this is all being reimbursed by FEMA, I understand, right? As I mentioned then, just because it's going on the national debt clock doesn't mean it's not taxpayer dollars and doesn't mean it's free. My concern was that the cost price sheet that was given to us for this item was exorbitant in the rates and the, and the matters that they had because the transportation of the debris from an outer island to landboard, the job, once it hits the land, the job is the same as the one, one they already had. We just had to load the barge, take, float the barge, unload the barge, and it becomes a standard part of the agreement again. I asked a question in that meeting, and again, I was only on the clock for ten minutes, and I said, this item could make a, one single load of trash cost a half a million dollars in household hazardous waste, and you don't get to keep the truck at the end of the job, right? I mean, it was just, the rates were, were exorbitant. I was told that we had to do this amendment to the contract because we didn't have mechanisms in place and we bid the job to have a contingency for island work. You recall that, right? And I was told that we didn't. However, since that meeting on November nineteenth, much to my chagrin, we have hauled seventy-two tons of household hazardous waste from North Captiva for a cost of three point four million dollars. So, almost eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars a load plus tipping fees, right? For essentially four dumpster loads of trash, three and a half million dollars. That's what we got for our money, okay? I was told it's, it's a blended rate, it's all in there, it's, it, however, the only reason you segregate debris and, and trash, and I, I know a little bit about this business over the last twenty-one years, you sort it because of where, where you're going to go with it and how much it costs to get rid of it, right? That's, that's why the categories of waste exist, right? Whether it's concrete or trees or municipal solid waste, whatever it is, it's all based on the cost of getting rid of it. It doesn't cost, the truck doesn't know if it's got a load of feathers or a load of rocks. It's just a truckload of material in the truck. We're, we are paying a rate in this amendment contract. It's another copy of the number one that we had last November nineteenth. And much to my chagrin, I did some homework on this, and in June first of 2023, we actually did an amendment to disaster services with Crowder Golf, and the label of the headline for the bill was concrete removal for disaster services was the, the name of the item. However, in the RFP given to them, signed off by us that day, it included the concrete and additional services for barge and tug, rental and operation of barge and tug per day, twelve thousand five hundred dollars, mobilization for barge and tug, forty thousand, and demobilization for forty thousand. So, I don't know why we didn't just do a change order based on the actual work scope that was needed, that was already bid and priced then at a rate that's profitable but still be, I could still live with. We, I don't know why we needed an amendment number three, and I don't know why we needed an amendment number four because we already have an agreement for this, June first of 2023. So, my suggestion is that we don't approve this deal, and we ask the team to look at we, getting our work rebuilt to us at the rates we already agreed to, and hopefully we can use that FEMA money for something else more tangible.
May I add?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to ask Christine Brady to respond to that.
Commissioners, just as a matter of reference, this is a, a contract amendment to include Usepa Island. As Commissioner Malika stated, you did approve the original amendment, Amendment Three back on November nineteenth. This is specifically for commer, for commercial property debris removal, and as you are all aware, that that is not typically reimbursable under FEMA guidelines. So, we were not planning on doing CPDR pickup. We did receive notification in November from FEMA and FDM that we did have approval for one pass for commercial property debris removal or CPDR, and North Captiva Island, Caya Costa, and Usepa are all considered CPDR. When we brought this to the board in November for approval for that amendment, North Captiva and Caya Costa were included, but at that time, we had not received a request from Usepa for CPDR. That request came in mid-December, after your December meeting, and so therefore, this is to add Usepa to that amendment that was already approved for the board. I do understand that the commissioner has some, some concerns as it relates to, to the pricing of this, but this, 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 which is on the table right now, is just to add Usepa so that we can continue to move forward with that one pass for CPDR that is providing the same level of service for North Captiva and Caya Costa.
So, Mr. Chair, in the agreement, commercial is not contemplated in the agreement, and therefore, when you get approval for CPDR, that's what is taking place. And Chris, can you also just touch on barging? Because barging contemplated in the agreement is not for commercial debris as well.
Actually, I'm going to ask Amanda if she can concur me enough.
That's correct, Commissioners. The initial amendment that was done for barge and tug, that was simply for barging services. The barging rate that you had approved on November nineteenth was fully burdened with the equipment that would be necessary to actually collect and move the debris. So, that's the difference of the two different barge rates.
Okay. I am in the commercial and residential demolition and waste hauling business on a daily basis. The truck doesn't care what address it came from. It only cares how much it weighs, right, and where it's going. It's just, we're in the business of moving material from point A to point B. Saying it's a commercial job or an island job, it specifically says barge and tug as a scope of work. There was a menu of hundreds of items for disaster cleanup, from cutting two-inch tree branches to grinding things, to screening dirt on beaches. I mean, there's a, there's five hundred scope items in this contract, right? But this, the amount of money, somehow, I told you this pay grid that they turned in for this change order, I said was price gouging, in my opinion, and I still do, I stand by that. Out of the entire islands, it must be the most toxic place in the county. I didn't realize North Captiva was that hazardous because somehow on this pay plan, they have managed to generate seventy-two tons of debris on Caya Costa and North Cap, right? I mean, they don't seem very toxic to me. In the entire county, in, on the entire landboard portion of all of Lee County and both Storms Jam, which we found everywhere else, a hundred and eleven tons. But we found seventy-one in the place where it pays us fifty thousand dollars a can, a ton, I'm sorry, a ton per load. So, I'm telling you, the pay matrix is skewed heavily against us on this, and we're not receiving the value of services that we deserve or entitled to. That barge doesn't care, nor, but Fuzzy's, just to give a shout out to Fuzzy, hi, Fuzzy. Fuzzy runs back and forth every day to North Cap, the barge service that, you could, you could build a house on Usepa and replace one that's there for a million three. That's what they want us to pay to clean up some trash on the island right now, right? This just doesn't make sense, went to your earlier point. So, we already had a deal. We should have just said, we need a change order for this line item. They could have subcontracted for this forty grand immobilization, the daily rate for that barge. They would have been happy to have the job, and the trash would have gone back and forth in the cans, just like it did anyway. It just would have been at a predetermined rate that we were told as a board wasn't on the table, and that's why we had to do the change order. That was a seven and a half million dollar walk-on agenda item in my first meeting that I couldn't get conveyed. So, I'm still not satisfied that we didn't, needed either one of those agreements, referring to that rushed agreement on November nineteenth, to me, runs a little bit hollow, and we're getting billed six million, six point one million dollars right now for this project. And I don't want to see this path continue without those two items being renegotiated back to where it should have been from the beginning. I don't know if, if somebody just made a mistake and overlooked this line item and saw concrete on the change order and didn't look at barge services being added specifically after Ian, seven months later. I think they just made a mistake, and that's okay. I just want to fix it.
Just for clarity, is time sensitive for today?
Yes, it is. We have a very short window that the state gave us to pick up commercial debris. I believe we had a hundred and twenty days, and we're coming up on it as we speak. So, that's why it's imperative to get this through, much like it was to get the other two islands through. I'm not sure who to ask. Chris, I mean, I, the, the question is, negoti, the, the contract that's negotiated does not comport with what we, what the state gave us direction to. I, I guess we're having a hard time getting that, that, that information out. Who is it that we can bring up to answer that question specifically?
I'm, I'm going to ask Amanda if she can take the first. Is it Mary Tucker?
Yeah.
Okay. Mary Tucker from Procurement, I believe.
I think, Mary, if I may, Commissioner, if I may just try to get what you're saying. What's negotiated in the contract right now is what your concern is that it's different with the commercial debris pickup and what we're bringing forward, correct?
I'm saying it isn't. I'm saying we have...
But what we're paying the commercial entity, what we're paying now for commercial pickup?
Right.
What, what the, what the...
The matter before us is to approve a rate sheet for this project.
Exactly. So, is that something you can answer, Mary?
I don't know.
Essentially, the rate sheet from the original contract to the rate sheet for what is now being proposed in the amendment, why, why there is a difference in price and why it doesn't conform to the original agreement. Did I state that right, Commissioner?
Close enough.
Good morning, Mary Tucker, Director of Procurement Management. The original RFP, when it was issued, it was anticipated on only doing residential. It was never anticipated on doing commercial because FEMA only allows typically for the residential, and that was what they bid on was for residential. When they did the solicitation for, and actually, the original contract that we did did not include barging services because that's not something that was anticipated. Whenever we got Hurricane Ian happened and we couldn't get to the islands, that's when we added the barging services. But those barging services weren't going to be for picking up debris. Those were for helping us get equipment over to the islands to help them. So, I think maybe that is probably the difference is in this amendment that we just did in November for the island... November, for the islands, is for commercial debris, which they charge us more for, plus they had to get all of their equipment over to the islands.
If I may, Mary, in order to get reimbursement, you have to have that spelled out, so that therefore, that's why you have to amend it. So the original agreement didn't have those components spelled out, and therefore, we wouldn't get reimbursed. We had to amend the agreement, and, well, we had to negotiate and then amend the agreement, correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
I'm sorry we have to air all these things out in this public way, because it sounds more adversarial than I would like it to be. You have been very helpful to me on every question I've ever had, so I don't mean to sound like I'm overly diplomatic. But I will tell you, trash doesn't know where it came from. When you bring it over the scale to Lee Hendry, they don't ask you if it's residential or commercial. It just, how much does it weigh, and what is it? And that's your bill. That's it. It doesn't know it came from a house, or an airport, or anywhere else.
But may I ask a question out of curiosity, Mr. Chairman? On our normal solid waste hauling rates, though, don't commercial customers pay a higher rate than residential customers?
I believe that is correct.
Well, they have bigger trash cans.
Yes, yes, they do.
And FEMA also-
They have dumpsters instead of, I'm sorry.
Well, I mean, I'm just, I'm just trying to, you know, I'm trying to, and I think the questions are great, you know, because I wish we could approach everything with curiosity. A healthy sense of curiosity is important. Having dialogue in public is important, so I don't think anybody should feel bad about anything that's taken place. So that's, that's, that's why I, I just wanted to approach it with a sense of curiosity. I do know that the bill, you know, my dad's business is a lot bigger than the bill at my house. And so I thought, yeah, maybe commercial is just more expensive than residential, and that's the normal fee structure. I think a lot of what you said makes a tremendous amount of sense. And, you know, it is really frustrating, whenever you pay for any kind of emergency, you know, service, that you are going to pay a lot more than you will for regular order service. I had the pleasure of my air conditioner dying over the weekend, and, and I had, I had the real pleasure of having to pay what I had to pay. And it's funny, because I called a different air conditioner company, and I said, hey, this is what they're charging me, and it seems exorbitant. And they're like, well, tell me what they're charging. And I said, well, here's the amount. And they said, oh, no, that's what we get, that's right. I'm just like, this is crazy. So anyways, long story short, I, I wonder if there's an opportunity here, because it sounds like we are up against a deadline to get this picked up. I think one of the things that the people at home count on us to do is to clean up after an emergency, and Usepa certainly has been waiting on a while to get this cleaned up. We have approval from the feds and from the state to go ahead and do this pass, even at this price, which I agree, is not a great price, right? But my question is, how could we maybe get the job done today, now, and then work together to get this improved in the future? I think one of the things we try to do are preposition contracts, and, and this is what we're talking about, is amending one of our preposition contracts. How can we make sure next year's contract is better? How can we make sure next year's contract anticipates this, and locks in better rates and better costs and prices for us? I, I know that sounds like a compromise, but, but that might be something we can do to get business done today, because we, I mean, we're still on the consent agenda, and it's 11:06.
Okay. Look.
In fact, just for clarity, there's some great questions, it's a lot of money to get rid of some trash, it's a very, a little, very little amount of trash. But the county manager and for staff, was this, went through a procurement process? Was this put up for bids, or other companies could have bid on this process?
No.
Was this part of the emergency, this is the contract we had, Crowder Gulf, and the whole-
Correct.
Okay. Was that, the fee they were charging, was that normal, what they charged throughout the disaster, the last disaster?
Yes, they were required to do a, a cost analysis, and it is consistent with what is being charged across the state.
Okay, thank you.
Independent cost analysis, what-
Like Commissioner Hammond says, it is a lot of money, as has been pointed out. But Commissioner, it sounds outrageous, we have to pay that much for a little bit of trash, because it's on a barrier island. But I understand, obviously, it's harder to get the trash off island, once it's on land. Like David said, it's, trash is trash, doesn't matter where it came from. It's one wait, period, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I understand the frustration, and I, I agree with everything that's being said. I, 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 there is a concern, obviously. I think the issue is, is that we, only one other time, we had commercial pickup. Our assumption was that wasn't going to happen again, based on the cost associated with picking up commercial after Ian.
Ian.
Ian. So our assumption, obviously wrong, was that that was not going to happen again, because we did hear from the state how expensive overall that, that process was. We did not include it as we moved forward. That is something that we, we could look at and, and include as we move forward. But again, that independent cost analysis was done as a requirement to move forward, and it's consistent across the state. I'm not saying that's good or bad, I'm just saying, we, we did all the things that we were supposed to do, required by FEMA through this process.
Two questions, obviously, that may be germane to this conversation. Ian, obviously, we experienced unprecedented reimbursement for items that are not normally done. Commercial debris, construction debris, all those things were not necessarily generally reimbursed. Is that a correct statement?
Chris?
Yes, sir.
So, you know, what, we ran into the issue, and I brought it up at the meeting, when we were running into difficulties with commercial, because obviously, we were not, there was not clarity provided on commercial for Ian, or, or for Helena Milton. And we certainly initially at first pass, thought the FEMA would not reimburse us, state would not reimburse us. They gave us a one-time pass, am I saying that correctly? And allowed us to do so, because normally, the commercial, the way government thinks, is that it's commercial's responsibility, not theirs. And I think what's confusing to the residents is that when we did something that was unprecedented in Ian, is that the new norm? And that's not exactly what we say. Did I say what was accurate?
Let me just provide a little bit of-
Sure.
-clarification. So during Hurricane Ian, it was the state who did the commercial, the CPDR pass. It was not at the counties. So-
But they paid for it.
They paid for it, and I believe to the tune of close to about $1 billion. And that was for-
How much?
About a billion dollars, and I think that was for all of Florida, that they did the CPDR pickup for. We made an ask at, after these hurricanes to the state. We did request for them to do CPDR pickup. We were denied the request because of the exorbitant cost from Hurricane Ian. And so the request then was made to allow the county for a, for one pass of a CPDR. So we did request the state. The state had done it during Ian, state had said no, then we made an additional request for CPDR. We did not receive that until November for the one pass.
Just one more follow-up, and I'll certainly turn it back over to Commissioner Maleka. Did we actually pause, as we were waiting for clarity for, for commercial pickup on these storms? What I mean was, we obviously didn't know this may potentially have an opportunity to be reimbursed, so we paused a little bit. There might have been some period of time, some anxiety in our community, because obviously, we couldn't do that.
We did not move forward with CPDR pickup until we received notification.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner?
If I can, Chairman?
Absolutely.
I just kind of sit back and listen, but it kind of brings me back to several years ago, when, when we discussed the fact that we, the ability to use some local companies under these kind of circumstances would make a lot of sense. Because to me, in normal business, and being in that, you know, in construction business, I've hauled off a lot of debris myself, and that number's ridiculous. Let's just be honest. I, again, think that we should learn lessons from these storms, and we should look forward and say, if this happens again, we need to somehow make sure that we have contracts that we have, are using more local people. It, it's easy to say, let's just use that company, let them come, come and do everything, but these are the examples of what happens. At the end, is we get hammered. And I think they're hammering us, that's my personal opinion. So I can see why the Commissioner, being in that type of business, understands where these numbers are pretty crazy. So I think in the future, as we move forward, we really need to look at the contracts that are being signed by our staff, or being agreed upon by staff, that we're looking, that when we agree to them, that we understand what we're getting, for, for the taxpayers' dollars. And I think we need to do a better job in doing that. I understand the situation we're in here, but I think in the future, that if, if we really care about the tax dollars we're spending, we need to do a better job of making sure that we're negotiating better contracts, and that we are using local people, so these kind of things don't happen, because they just put a number out there, and we pay it, unfortunately. And that's just, again, a personal opinion, but I, I want us to see us move forward in the future, and figure out if these hurricanes happen again, or these storms happen, the debris, if we're using local people, I don't think we would see these kind of things. My personal opinion. But I wanted to make sure I got my two cents in. Thank you, Chairman.
It's a great discussion. Certainly want to make sure all parties are heard.
So, County Attorney, maybe you can help me out with this, please. Is there a way that we could move the item to take care of the residents, right? First and foremost, we want to take care of them, right? Nobody wants to stand in the way of that. But is there a way that you could help us examine their existing contract prior to the amendment on November 19th, to see if there are these amendments in price are necessary, or they weren't previously agreed to? Because in my opinion, they, they certainly appeared to have been active prior to that amendment. And if there's a way to reframe a negotiation of price to, they signed a five-year contract, and it was amended after the hurricane, for exactly what the upgrade to service was to go to islands to do. If there's a way that we could reexamine the billing part of this, I'm okay with the work. Can you help me craft something along those lines, please?
Hold on, Mary, stay here.
Mr. Chair, I think, my understanding is, the only way we could do that is if we had, we rebid it.
Yes, we can resolicit for it, we can cancel our contracts at any time, and then we can resolicit and get new pricing. We can't just go, federally doesn't allow us to go renegotiate those prices. In order for us to get new pricing, we would need to re, reissue the solicitation.
I'm saying, upon the attorney's review of the contract, if those services that we are using them for now, were already covered in their existing bid prior to Amendment Number Three, can we just pursue that opportunity? Because we already made a deal with them for this. We're not asking them to rebid it. I'm saying they already did.
Ms. Chairman, it's my understanding, however, that that original bid did not contemplate the hauling of commercial debris, and, and that is a central focus in, in this circumstance. So I understand the discussion about the, the weight, the weight scales not caring about the type of concrete that crosses it, FEMA does. And that is the distinction that's being drawn in this amendment, was the fact that commercial debris was not originally contemplated in the contract. We therefore have to amend the contract for FEMA tracking purposes that will identify this as commercial debris, and that comes at a higher cost.
Would, maybe a suggestion, again, just, obviously, we are going to talk, we're going to talk at our strategic planning about emergency services. We can certainly include this item for conversations for clarity, for the future, do whatever we need to, bring it back to this body. I think it's two parts of the problem. I think Commissioner makes some valid points, I hear the explanations, I think there's an opportunity to further drill down, further have more conversations. We always learn after the fact if we do things. But this might be, you know, if we expand that hurricane item and expand some of the topics, just a suggestion, since we can't talk anytime other than up here.
All right, so respectfully to everybody's time, and, and I think, I think my points have been heard. I would still like the opportunity to review the contracts with, with the county staff and attorneys after this in more detail. If we do, in, in fact, find there's something discoverable that's to our advantage on the pricing, that is, can make this more fair, I think we're all open to that, without interrupting service for the residents. So I'll make a motion to move the item today.
Motion. Second. A second. Public comment. Close public comment. And, and, you know, Commissioner, I appreciate your conversation. I think it's always great to have these conversations, as the public realizes we need to do this up here. I think it's most important that you have the conversation you do with staff, and I think if we can understand the issue, you might be able to certainly go into more detail. I think under the strategic planning, we could have it, if we need to have any additional workshops, whatever, we just could frame this in an environment where we're dealing about what can we do better for the county, strategic plans for, how do we improve? Does that seem reasonable?
It absolutely does. But this is a perfect shining example of what I was talking about earlier with the state of emergency-
Absolutely.
-of ratifying a deal that's already been made, or approving one that's going to be made tomorrow. So, thank you.
Yeah, and, and just lastly, I think the county manager goes out of his way to make sure, as we do strategic planning, that person that facilitates that goes around meets whatever, Commissioner, we have that item. So since we're going to address hurricanes, state of emergency, we can certainly have an A, a B, a C, and do that. I'm just trying to find some consensus, some direction to make sure you have it, some clarity, and we can come on back here with a lot more information for the public to understand what it is. Today's issue is, do we or don't we pass this? Today's issue, it's commercially reimbursed by FEMA, which was not necessarily the norm. And I respect everything that goes on here, we can certainly always improve, that's what we're trying to do. Is that fair? Any other discussion? Any objections? Seeing none, this motion carries. Any other items?
We'll take the rest of the day off.
Great conversation. I mean, listen, that's what we're here for, and, and I get that.
We're steward to the taxpayer dollars, I'm just trying to do a good job.
I, I learned more in the last 15 minutes, I'll tell you what, it's fantastic, great conversation. Good, good questions.
Okay. That concludes consent agenda. Got with all the other issues. I, I do apologize, I have some family medical emergencies going on as we speak, so if I step off the dais, I do apologize in advance. They're certainly critical in my family. Administrative agenda, County Manager?
The first item is for the County Attorney.
Ms. Chairman, Commissioners, our office, on behalf of the County Manager, is respectfully requesting the Board set a closed executive session for the purpose of providing guidance to your negotiating team with regard to collective bargaining involving local 1826. Commissioners, Chapter, Section 447.605 allows for this type of public meeting. We respectfully requesting that you set the attorney-client session to be held Tuesday, February 4th, 2025, commencing at 8:30 a.m. In these chambers, we will then recess to the East Room. We anticipate the meeting to take no more than an hour. In attendance will be, hopefully, Commissioner Chairman Ruane, Vice Chairman Pendergrass, Commissioner Maleka, Commissioner Hammond, Commissioner Greenwell, Mr. Harner, myself, Andrea Frazier, Sasha Dyson, Labor Counsel, and a court reporter designee. We respectfully request approval.
Thank you, Mr. County Attorney. I'll make that motion.
I'll second it, Chairman.
I have a motion, a second, on the table for administrative item number one. Any public comment on this? Seeing none, I'll close public comment, I'll bring it back up to the Commission. Any other conversation, any other things, points we need to make on the record? Seeing none, anyone opposed? Seeing none, motion carries unanimously. Number two, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. This, this item is to approve fund balance adjustments and budget carryovers for fiscal year 2425. I have to ask Mr. Pete Witten to present the item.
Commissioners, this is your year-end close for your fiscal year 2324 budget, and that's when all of the budgeted numbers are replaced with actual expenses, actual revenues received. And then that's carried forward through the year that we're in, to a ending reserve for September 30th, 2025. We forecasted that to be about $92.3 million during the budget process, and we came in a little better than that, at $96.8 million. And per the Board's budget approval, we're holding $20 million in reserve for any future potential deficit for '25, '26.
Thank you, Mr. Witten, I appreciate your explanation. I'll certainly move the item.
I'll second.
I have a second from Commissioner Greenwell. I'll go to public, any comments on this? Year-end adjustment. Seeing none, bring it back up to the dais. Any other discussion? Anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all. Next item on the agenda is... Any more Commissioner, Mr. Dave agenda?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Chair. This item is to approve sub-grant agreement with Collaboratory for County Projects Using EPA Grant- EPA grant funding, and I'd like to ask Mr. Ben Abes to present the item.
Good morning, Commissioners. Benjamin Abes, Public Safety. Before you, it was a sub-grant agreement with the Collaboratory, which would use EPA funds for a number of county projects that we'd be working on within public safety. The Collaboratory applied for a grant through the EPA, and if you'll recall back in May, we brought an item forward for the board to act as the statutory partner for this grant. This was a grant opportunity that was available to nonprofits and community organizations, but those community organizations had to have a designated local government to act as that statutory partner in order for the grant application to be accepted by the EPA. That grant was subsequently awarded in December. It is a total amount of $19.3 million and will work on a number of different initiatives within the Resilient Lee Plan. Those are illustrated there on the right side of the slide on the screen. The county's focus is on resilience hubs. These are community-based hubs. They'll have outreach and support, including disaster education that will occur year-round. However, post-disaster, we can think of these as a community coordination spot for local teams and resources, our county resources, as well as community resources to come together to help get neighborhoods and communities through the disaster together. This funding that we're asking you to accept today will help us to build out a plan and standards to act as the blueprint for these hubs. The plan will also build out and begin the delivery of this community programming that will occur within the resilience hubs. This is a three-year period of performance, and will also include a new FTE within emergency management. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. Yes, sir.
I appreciate it very much. Appreciate all your work, Ben. It's been trying times, obviously, to say the least. It's certainly very enlightening and certainly gratifying to see the EPA come through with this type of grant. The resilient Lee Plan, as I indicated earlier, just one clarification for the record, that it will contemplate what we did for Ian. Obviously, we'll make improvements to both Talina and Milton. We're going to obviously expand that to do so. Is that correct?
That's correct. We're going to work with the Collaboratory to begin looking at our experience this past hurricane season, look at the lessons learned, and how those may change or tweak or reform what we prescribed in the resilient Lee Plan that you approved.
I'm glad you moved the item. A second. Any other conversation?
I do have one.
Move or quicker, but...
Yeah, thanks, Chairman. My question was, I'm fully supportive of this idea, and I think it's a fantastic approach. I actually got a chance to go out to Pine Manor and listen to some of the ideas about what they want to do out there. So I think it's a fantastic approach. My concern is, if you plot these four resiliency hubs on a map, they're like clustered really tight together. Why didn't we spread it throughout the county?
So with every grant opportunity that the federal government has, there's a notice of funding availability, that NOFA document. And part of the NOFA and the requirements for the grant were that activities had to occur within a specific geographic area prescribed by the EPA. And so they published a map of the areas where the activities had to occur, and all of those activities had to occur within designated zones on that map. And in this case, the zone... There were other parts of the county where other work could have been done, but to find one contiguous zone where we could hit multiple policies and multiple initiatives under the resilient Lee Plan within one contiguous geographic area, that was the area that suited the needs of the grant.
I understand that no money comes from the federal government without strings attached. I guess if I had any chance to give input on this as it was being planned, I would have definitely said, you need something out in Sun Coast area, you need something out in Lehigh Acres. I mean, we certainly hit some important communities, but we've got three of them basically along State Road 82, and it's like, I don't... I mean, within the city limits of Fort Myers, I don't understand why we wouldn't have hit some of the other communities in our county that I think certainly would qualify for resiliency hubs and certainly benefit from the services that it sounds like they're going to be provided. You know, like I said, I'm going to support it. I just, I wish I would have had input, a better chance to see where they were going to be laid out, because I think you could have helped other communities than what we're doing here.
Ms. Chairman, if I may? Commissioner, to your point, this is a pilot for these first four. This does allow for us to, in the future, we do have a second phase. This is the first phase. We do have a second phase to those entities and communities that you're talking about to move out to those areas in the future.
How long do we think the first phase is going to last?
I think probably within the first six to nine months, we'll have the blueprint and the plan in place, and then we'll be able to use that plan to then go out and identify more locations within the community. The locations you identified in Lehigh Acres and North Fort Myers, our barrier islands have locations. All of those are ripe once we've got kind of the set of requirements that we're going to build through this opportunity.
Okay. Thanks, Chairman.
The other thing I'd be remiss in just thanking extended, I see Cecil Sage in the audience, the great work the Collaboratory done. I appreciate the partnership. I appreciate what we're trying to do to strengthen Lee County and all the things we've done together. It's been certainly my honor to work with your group. Kudos to your organization. It was great as what we did. Look forward to this, and thank you very much. I wanted the recognition because it is a collaboration between two partners, and without the Collaboratory, I'm not necessarily certain how this would have turned out, but thank you very much. With that in mind, any public comments? We have a motion, a second on the floor.
Go on up. Marsha Ellis for the record, and I know that Commissioner Ruane, he was there leading the resilience meetings, resilient Lee, and he is most familiar with this issue. And I hear some great questions coming up from other folks who weren't privy perhaps to as many of those meetings. And I was there at those meetings and am familiar with some of the directives regarding the resilience hubs. And I applaud these efforts. However, one of the major concerns was that the schools need to get back online, all right? And that we needed other resources in the community that would allow for those inspections to take place so that we could bring the kids back in school, et cetera. And it was about sort of diversifying some of those community resources, adding to what we already have. And there were some discussions about other civic commons facilities that are in the community that could be utilized to build on what we have and diversify those resources. So I just, you know, asked that we look back on some of those organizations, those community resources. I know that some of the art centers, the community centers were mentioned as being, serving as both blue and gray skies operations that the community could identify that weren't serving multiple roles already in the community, that weren't open for kids coming into school, buses, people being there, and were identified in the community easily as those resilient hubs and maybe weren't wearing so many hats that would come into conflict through the period leading up to and following recovery. So as much as I support the schools, I just question relying on them as hubs.
Any other public comments? Seeing none, I'll bring it back up to the commission. Any other discussion? Seeing none. Thank you very much, both Ben and Tess. I can't thank you enough. No objections? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We'll now move on to the public hearing. Got the agenda correct? Item number 57.
Good morning, Commissioners. I have your first and second public hearing this morning. For the record, Amanda Swindle at the county attorney's office, and both of these public hearings have been legally advertised. The first hearing is a request to adopt a resolution which would approve a plan of finance involving the issuance of single-family mortgage revenue bonds in an amount not to exceed $80 million by the Housing Finance Authority of Lee County. As you, I'm sure you realize, these bonds are not an obligation or debt of the county, and there are no administrative costs associated with our approval. Our approval is required by state law and the IRS regulations in order to qualify for tax-exempt status. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions for Amanda? I move the item. A motion on the floor.
I'll second it, Chairman.
I have a second. Motion by Commissioner Pendergrass, second by Commissioner Hammond. Any public comment on the first public item? Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Joe Beck. Reside at 2531 Second Street. Single-family, does that include single-family attached?
I'm not sure if someone from the Housing Finance Authority, if their counsel is here today, but I do believe that would be a better question for the Housing Finance Authority because it does directly involve their plan of finance, so I'd be happy to get that information if you'd like, Commissioners.
Glad to do so. Obviously, we try to do the best we can to accommodate our constituents. We'll get back to them. Yes, sir, come on up. Sorry, couldn't see you back there. I apologize.
There's a lot of good questions asked on the housing to low-income families. As I all know, that I purchased with the help of somebody else to aid a community in Sun Coast. And Charlie unfortunately isn't here from the community center. He was going to try to make it, and I texted before I came here. So, Mr. Hammond, we'd like to find out what your schedule is, and maybe Charlie and all of us can meet on getting some funding to have some housing on this property that was bought to aid that community, okay? And turn it in now. Right now, it's in my name, and I am paying back a personal advocate that helps the homeless. I owe her 26,000, I would have 30-some thousand dollars, so that part I will take care of. But to get the money to aid that community and the Sun Coast Community Center, that's why the property was bought. So sit down with you and see what can be done or whatever, but it is to be a basically nonprofit with a trust for my child, because my health is not that great. So working together, we can solve these problems of housing, but we really need some emergency in this area, in the different boroughs of Bonita here. As you said, not just want to get a place. Sun Coast is very strapped with very low-income people, a lot of drug activity, and a lot of thievery. I've been robbed three times by the bus. But are you going to hate the world for the bad? No, you're going to try to help the good and all people and get them to rehab or whatever. So see what your agenda is, and I'll turn it over to Charlie, so I'll pick up a card from you with some contact information later. But we really do need people off the street. This new law is affecting everybody, and homeless should not, because of circumstances, not be homeless because, you know, there might be elderly, there might have new owners took over places, met people that way. So let's all work together to solve that problem, and not free, but affordable, depending on the income, okay? Thank you.
For clarification, my motion to approve is for the actual agenda item was authorized issuance of HFA, single-family mortgage revenue bonds. So that was the motion, and we have a motion, a second.
Motion, a second on the floor. Any other public comments? Seeing none, come back up to the commission. Any objections? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. The second public hearing is to authorize the issuance of multifamily mortgage revenue bonds by the Housing Finance Authority of Lee County in an amount not to exceed $28.5 million to finance the Ecos on Evans Project located at 3501 Evans Avenue in Fort Myers.
Move the item. Motion on the floor.
Second, that, Chairman.
I have a second from Commissioner Hammond. Any public comment? Seeing none, I'll close public comment and bring it back up to the commission. Any other discussion? Any objections? Objections, motion carries unanimously. Okay, that concludes... We have one more public item? Sorry.
We have one more public hearing. It's to adopt an ordinance amending the Salt Leaf CDD boundaries. This ordinance will be adding 157.32 acres and removing 21.56 acres. County staff, county attorney's office have reviewed the petition by the district and recommend approval of the ordinance as adopted, as drafted.
I move the item.
Second, Chairman.
On the floor, I have a motion by Commissioner Pendergrass, second by Commissioner Hammond. Public comment? Seeing none, I'll close public comment and bring it out to item number 59. Any other discussion? Any objections? Motion carries unanimously. That concludes our public hearing. Move on to next item on the agenda, which is walk-ons and carry-ons. See walk-ons and carry-ons? Don't see any on the agenda. We'll go to Commissioner Items. Commissioner Hammond.
I have none today.
Commissioner Pendergrass.
Yes, I do. I'd like to bring up the discussion, like to see if the board has consensus to have the staff bring back some policy changes for moving fluoride from our currently county utility system. Obviously, it's been a push locally in Florida. A lot of cities and counties have looked to review to the use of fluoride in the drinking water, the utility system. So I was going to see if there's consensus with the board to have staff bring back to us the next meeting our options and what the cost savings is and what the options are for our community if they wish to use fluoride at home themselves. But I'd like to see how we could remove fluoride from our mandatory utilities that we provide now currently. So do I need that in the motion? County Attorney? So my motion is to have staff come back to us, give us options about removing fluoride from our county utilities water system.
County Attorney?
Yes, sir. Ms. Chairman, we would prefer that be in the form of a motion.
Okay. That was my motion.
A second.
I have a motion, a second. Motion by Commissioner Pendergrass, second by Commissioner Greenwell. We'll go to public comment. Seeing none, I appreciate Commissioner, we'll bring it back up here, sorry. I appreciate you bringing it up. You obviously got in the game with a whole bunch of requests from citizens. I appreciate you being proactive and obviously being responsive to the needs. Any other discussion? Seeing none, any objections? Seeing none, motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much.
That's it.
Just for clarity purposes, Commissioner, item I do have is I've been working with staff tomorrow, Thursday, is a item before the HECs examiner regarding poker parking. I'm not going to talk about that item, but staff is certainly looking at administrative potential things that they may bring to our attention. In the historical district of Boca Grande, it obviously affects Boca Grande and Mount Lachey, historical issues which are very sensitive. With that, there's the clinic there that has some issues. So they're going to propose some overlay for some parking and some considerations for us. I just want everyone to bring it to our attention. It'll come up to us. Obviously, I just want to put on the record, there's some anxiety in both Mount Lachey and Boca. I want to assure them that we're proactively working on this and have been. I also just want to bring it to your attention. We don't have an opportunity to talk. And again, there's nothing other than they're working on a document. They'll bring it to us, obviously, to make sure we continue to address the historical district. That's my item. Commissioner Malekka.
I don't have any particular Commissioner items, but I do have appointments. Is this the right?
So we'll go to Commissioner appointments next. Commissioner Items first, Mr. Hammond.
No items.
I have no items.
Which appointment? Commissioner Hammond.
None today.
Commissioner Pendergrass.
I have two. Reappointment of Tyler Katez for the historical preservation, and the new one for Daley Solis for a Board of Adjustments of Appeals.
Second. Any public comment on the motion on the floor? Seeing none, I'll close public comment and bring it back up here. Any discussion? Any objections? Motion carries unanimously. I don't have any appointments. Commissioner Malekka, appointments?
Well, I'm excited to say that I have five. Do I read them all out individually and or just as?
You could read them all, and we'll approve them as one motion.
Okay. So motion to restore or continue Joe Smith on the Historic Preservation Committee, and then the following four people are on the Old Pelican Bay Channel Canal, O and M, MSBU. Dana Minning, Christopher Clausen, Kevin Dahlgren, and Ronald Lazinski.
Second. Second, that.
Motion, a second, on the floor. Any public comments on this item? Seeing none, I'll close public comment. I'll bring it back up to the commission. Any other discussion? Any objections? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much, Commissioner Greenwell.
Yes, Chairman, I have one. New Don Plunkett, Plunkett to Daughtry's Creek Street Lighting Unit committee.
A motion, a second, on the floor. We'll go to public comment. Any public comment? Seeing none, I'll close public comment and bring it back up to the dais. Any discussion? Any objections? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Commissioners, county manager item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have one item. That's to discuss the county's E-911 coordinator and liaison to the state. I'd like to ask Ms. Christine Brady to present the item.
Good morning, Commissioners. The state has a requirement of providing a E-91 coordinator and liaison to the state. Mr. J.C. Meyer has recently been promoted within our organization to manager of Public Safety and Technology Services. Mr. Meyer's led Lee County's upgrade to transition to the next-generation nine-one-one equipment and networks. He's been part of the public safety team for the past twelve years, and he's been instrumental not only during our blue-sky, day-to-day communication operations of our public safety communications, but he's also been dedicated and instrumental during gray skies for many of the past storms that we have here. And aside from that, he's just an overall good guy. So, we are asking for your approval to designate Mr. J.C. Meyer as our E nine-one-one coordinator and liaison to the state, and as such, there is a letter for the chairman to execute if you so choose to move forward with this request.
Thank you very much, Chris. I appreciate the comments. I'll gladly move the item.
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Rowan, second by Commissioner Malaque. I'll go to public comment. Any public comment on this item? See none, I'll bring it back up to the Commission. Any discussion? Any objections? Motion carries unanimously. Any other items, County Manager?
No other items, Mr. Chair.
County Attorney?
Nothing further, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
We'll move on to public press and presentations. I'm going to hand the gavel over to Commissioner Penegras. Here's the quiet for public consultations. I'll be right back. Excuse me.
Thank you. First of all, Willie Gershaw Meyer. Willie, you want to speak again?
I noticed twenty-five on the agenda about profit sharing for a beer tent. I think that my proposal on this housing thing would be written in revenue, like I said, from the seed money we're applying for, that Charlie will be. Of course, he has the nonprofit, I don't. But this property will always be something that's going to generate money for the community as profit sharing, mainly it would have to go sixty-five percent as a nonprofit, and then thirty-some percent set aside for stipends, like paying somebody once in a while, cut grass, cleaning, all that kind of stuff. So, I caught that is a way to bring in revenue also. And this thing is, like I said, you know, as a person with not too great of health, giving back to society and to the community. That's why the property, as I said, was bought. So, unfortunately, Charlie isn't here, and like I said, Mr. Hammond, find out what your agenda is, so Charlie can call and set up something and see what we can really do. I know that money is tight, and like I said, it's hard to come by, but it's going back into this way. You know, it's not taking and making money for me, it's making money for the community and like a snapper for my child that has autism in another country. So, like I said, working together, we can solve the problem of housing for the very low-income and the elderly that are strapped, you know, because of income. So, I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next is Cindy Frex, I believe. Cindy? No address, no information. Public speaker, you got three minutes. The green light's on, when it turns yellow, you have thirty seconds.
Right here? Hi. Forgot to print my speech out, so I have to do it on my phone. I stand here today before you guys with a heavy heart pleading for the voiceless, our counties abandoned and neglected dogs and cats. Every day, helpless animals are being euthanized within just a few days of entering the shelters. Perfectly healthy, loving pets. Someone who once had homes, lost their homes. They've never had the chance, some of them. There isn't, we realize there's not enough space, time, or effort into finding homes, but we must do something better. We must take the initiative for adoption, more adoption programs. I understand the challenges our shelters face. Overcrowding is real, funding is limited, but taking the easy way out and killing these innocent animals is not an answer. Other communities have proven that with increased adoption efforts, foster programs in partnerships with rescues, we can dramatically lower the euthanasia rates. These solutions exist. We just need the will to implement them. And then there's the heartbreaking reality of backyard breeding. Unlicensed, unchecked, and out of control, these breeders flood our community with more animals, many of whom are dumped when they are no longer profitable. Backyard breeding is not just an animal welfare issue, it is a community issue. Shelter intake and ultimately more unnecessary euthanasia. We need stronger enforcement, harsher penalties, and education to stop this cycle of suffering. I am begging you, as leaders of our county, as leaders of our county, as people with the power to change lives, please take action. Extend the euthanasia timeline. Give these animals a real chance at adoption. Implement programs that connect them with foster families, rescue groups, and loving homes, and crack down on backyard breeding so we aren't endlessly fighting a pale battle. These animals did not choose to be abandoned. They did not choose to be born into suffering. But we, as a community, can choose to be their voice. We can choose compassion over convenience, life over death. Please, let's be the county that stands for kindness. Let's be the county that leads by example. Let's give these animals the chance they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Linda Schalmer. And after Linda, we have Laura Hepner.
Good afternoon or morning, I'm not sure where we are.
Good afternoon, now.
Hi. Linda Schalmer Clem here. So, today, I come up every day with all kinds of ideas that I want to talk to you guys about. Most recently, the big thing I'm finding is the need for our ordinance changes. In my internet trolling that we do so often, I have found a lot of things that say Lee County cares about their animals, but yet our ordinances don't reflect that. Multiple counties have enacted breeder registrations. That would include Palm Beach County, Miami Dade, Broward, Clay, Pinellas, Pope, Volusia, and many more. They also have regulations in regards to pet sales, whether they ban them completely or they regulate them. We don't have any of that, you know? We did have a wonderful ordinance back in two thousand and fourteen that was here only a few months and was abolished. Let me just tell you something that I found. A sizable drop could be seen within two to four years with as much as two-thirds reduction in a homeless pet population, LCDS officials say. That would mean five thousand fewer animals to care for in a savings of more than one point two million dollars to taxpayers. Those were the estimates back in two thousand and fourteen if that ordinance went through. And then I have, it's really important that we get this brought forth and approved. We need to reduce our homeless pet population. One of our board members so wonderfully approved that, helped approve that, and wanted it approved. Cecil Penegras was very wonderful stepping up way back when, but it seemed to have gotten lost in ten years. We have a crisis now. We need this put in place. There was some research done back then as to how this could reduce these animals being loose, killed, end up at the shelter. The breeders are out of control. You can go to Tractor Supply on any given day, drive out of the parking lot, you can see five to ten signs of people selling puppies. These breeder registrations also require, and what you had was wonderful, require that they can only breed with certification, and they can only breed with a registered breed. That would eliminate all the poor little doodles being overbred out there. That would eliminate, actually, if we were to keep it in check, that would eliminate pitfalls, that they're not a recognized breed. We'd have an avenue in which to go after these people to stop the breeding in the houses, and which eventually, like I said, those numbers were looked at. So, please, I can't address you, Cecil, but we got a whole bunch of you guys that weren't here back then when it was put in place and then removed. Could you please, please look into reinstating this? It's really gotten out of hand. Dogs are dying every day. There's been, I can't even name how many DOA pickups on the side of road just in Fort Myers. Cape Coral is blowing wide open. I was told by one of the sheriffs that the neglect rate is, complaints are going through the roof in Cape Coral.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Very much. Lori Hepner?
Hello, Commissioners. I'm Lori Hepner with Animal Justice. I hope that everyone had a great holiday. Now, down to business. Are you aware of how many pets are in the back room of the shelter? And have you personally seen it? There are forty-five dogs as of today and thirteen cats, and only five dogs on the adoption floor. Dogs have a three-day holding period and a five-day holding period, depending on if they're licensed shipped or not. We'd like to know why many pets there have exceeded the time period, and yet they're still not put on the main adoption floor. They are left in the back room where no one can, where they cannot be seen by the public. When they are in the back room, they have little or no hope of being adopted. For example, Jules, a three-year-old Parmarini mix, intake was January eleventh. Why is he still there? He should be on the main adoption floor. Also, there's a long-haired Chihuahua, five years old. I'd like to know, and her intake was January thirteenth. Tony, a Yorkshire Terrier mix, three years old, intake was on January ninth. Robbie, a neutered, smooth-coated male Chihuahua, three years old, intake date was January ninth. And so many other pets and larger breeds. We are unclear as to why these beautiful animals are kept in the area with no hope of being adopted, thus diminishing their chances for ultimate survival. Can you please look into this for us? Okay. Also, I would like to ask about the spay and neutering, which I was told we would have it by the fall. Well, that has passed. So, what is the news on that? And why can't we follow SNIP's lead in Collier County? Well, they have, where they have it under control. Collier County is also a no-kill shelter. We should follow their lead as LCDS has proven that they are incompetent, and most of the upper management could care less. So, if we, so, we must speak for these pets as this is unacceptable period. And Animal Justice cares for these animals, and we are grateful for your time and your attention. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Jerry Sorrelli.
Good morning. Is it still morning? Hi, Commissioners. So, it's been almost a year since we've been coming in here, and I think a lot of things have been said back and forth with some animosity, and I just want to kind of say, I'm just here for your help, guys. I think that we need to start on a whole other level and just say that so much is going on, been going on, so much needs to be done. And again, we're just pleading for your help. I mean, in that year, there's really so little that's been done and so much more that could be done. I don't really know if you guys know the magnitude of what's going on in the streets out there with the animals. I mean, I'm reading on Nextdoor, and this is just a small fraction of what's going on, and people saying things like, I don't even want to walk my children in the streets of Cape Coral anymore because there's so many aggressive roaming dogs out there in fear of being attacked. The next, and the next person says, agree, there's so little that's been done to enforce ordinances. Next guy says, I don't even want to watch my dogs because I'm afraid of all the aggressive dogs out there. A seventy-year-old lady says, in my seventy years, I have never seen the amount of stray dogs running the streets. It's gotten really bad out there. This was Volusia County, but an eight-year-old, I'm going to cry, a boy was mauled to death by two dogs that were roaming the streets. God forbid it happens in Lee County or anywhere else, but it did happen. We can't keep shoving stuff under the rug. We can't keep saying we can't. We got to sit down, guys, and figure out, please, I'm willing to sit with any one of you at any time and figure out how we can move forward in helping this problem. It's getting worse instead of better, and we got to do something, guys, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Utilize all the cards. Any other public comments? Come on up, sir.
This is Donja.
Yeah.
He's the one with the sidewalk issue.
Got you.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Hi, my name is Joe Beck. I reside at twenty-five thirty-one Second Street in downtown Fort Myers. I'm here to speak about urban trees and the need to have them pruned.
Thank you.
I was first approached by Commissioner Len Boucher, my commissioner in my area. He was talking about these trees on Fowler that the Mcgregors are huge, and they've, they're disturbing sidewalks. And he came to me, wanted to know what he could do. And he, I'm a landscape architect, and he said, you know, Joe, you're the expert, give me some options. I came up with some options. Actually, as I went and looked at the air, looked at the issue, the issues of the urban trees along that corridor have actually overgrown. They're mahogany's, they, it doesn't look like they've ever been pruned, but the trees have this huge canopy, they've got this small root zone, and the trees are trying to support this small canopy with the root structure, and the roots are going other places and causing mischief to get them water. And a simple solution is what's called a hurricane prune. Reduce fifty percent of the canopy, so the roots only have fifty percent less water to go after. And so, I wrote a proposal to Commissioner Boucher, which I now forwarded on to Brian because last week I found out that the roadway Fowler is actually a county road. I was talking to the wrong board. So, I presented a solution as a landscape architect, what could be done. I actually wrote a proposal, I applied to be a vendor for the city, for the county as a landscape architect, one of those professions that are allowed for special privileges or whatever. There's a term for it. But I'm available to provide solutions. My goal is to provide the documentation that would be needed for the procurement department to do a public bid. Just the documentation, and I'd like to be a problem, a person to create solutions to problems I see in the area. I'd love to have an opportunity to serve the board. Have your time.
Thank you very much. Any other public comments? See none, I'll close public comment. Bring it back up to the Commission. Just a couple of housekeeping items since we're in the public. One, I will not be here tomorrow for the zoning here. Vice Sheriff, if you take over for me, that'd be great. Friday, I have a Winston meeting that I'm not going to be able to attend. Anyone substitute for me?
Friday?
Friday's Winston's meeting.
What time is that one?
Nine AM.
Let me just double-check, Mr. Chair. Those still running about the same time?
Yeah, it's a pretty short agenda. I'll make sure panelists send it to your assistant so you could review it.
Yeah, that's fine. I'll miss the Horizon Council Executive Committee meeting, but I think I've served as your alternate on that before, and I think the Horizon Council can handle.
I appreciate everything I got to, some family matters I got to attend to, so I won't be here for the rest of the week.
All right.
Yeah.
If I could, DOT, if somebody from FDOT's here, I'm sorry, FDOT, our lead DOT could get with Joe Beck about the road, or sort of maintain a tree or staff give it. So, thank you.
Any other issues? I'll call for an adjournment. Thank you for the indulgence.